Good morning. Today is Wednesday, June 2nd. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Virgin County Board of Commissioners. Call this meeting to order and our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Their next is approval of minutes. We have.
None.
None. The only really one was Board of Health meeting.
Yeah, I had that last night.
Yeah. Okay, so we don't have any approval of minutes. So we have public input. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Any public comments? Seeing none in your audience, Justin.
I see any comments.
No comments. Going on to number three is a review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on a business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business.
I didn't see, I didn't see any. So I'll make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Road Department.
Like usual, we've been busy. Part of the crew's been at Coyote Creek the whole time since we last talked. Moving those corrals, well, moving the road, ended up moving corrals, helping with that. So basically, we were the tie set crew. It's a lot of work. Guys worked the butt off, but they got it done. Now they're finishing up the road. It should be finished tomorrow, so that, that project will be mostly complete. So that'll be good. Access to Coyote Creek now is not speaking progress. We're going to put a sign up soon and give us on. So that's good. And then also the half the crew was out here by, we're basically out by Thimbo. Working on a road that got blowed out, was, didn't get fixed this winter, so we all gravel bladed and stuff. It's a road, road that see punch use a lot, so we got that done for them. And then meanwhile, the, those rains we had washed out Trinity Canyon Road and Ragatta. So they fixed that on the way in and now everyone's out here coyotes, like I said, will be done tomorrow. Going to try to get a cattle project done for about two weeks, two to three weeks.
Good.
And me, I was helping, help with the corrals a little bit. Spraying weeds, then I, we and Jeff went to Reno and look at it one time that we're going to talk about later. And also met with Stan Tech about the landfill. We got that resolved. We got our, they said they'd issue our permit. And I had to get Stan Tech's help to make a map, a new map showing the boundaries and stuff that they wanted. We got that done. I don't have a bill from Stan Tech. I don't think it'll be too much, but it was something I couldn't do.
We had to have it.
Yeah, old James helped too. Very gracious about that work with me and Stan Tech. Two, three parties we got it done, so. That's about all I can think of right now. Spray weeds. Make weed grow, so starting that.
Is, and not getting ready to do the chip seal? They've done surveys.
Yeah, some sort of.
And then there's a bunch of gravel or chips that like intermountain or long mountain road where it intersects.
Right. As well, I think that must be the aggregate for.
Yeah.
So is that Upper Valley? Is that where they're going to do something? Because I've seen.
That's where I see.
So looks like they're going to do Upper Valley Road, the Robio.
Airport.
Pit road.
And then you did work at the corner lot too.
Oh yeah, I forgot to mention that. We, we ended up getting involved in that. The last minute, they, they didn't have a loader laid up. So we supplied the load and I had to work Saturdays. And then I spent the next three days down there. Tell you like, like Jesus, it didn't sound like I did much, but yeah, I took a few days that, you know, because I didn't want to bug the crew. They're busy, so I just went and did it and it took a little longer than it would have.
It looks good.
Got it finished cleaned up and we got a bunch of gravel left. It was really an efficient operation. They all the rubble up to the landfill and then I was up to loading back. We made a huge pile of gravel. It turned out it was, it was more than we needed. So Judge Wagner asked me if we could just, instead of, I was going to haul it back to the dump. And he asked me if instead of doing that, we could level it out right where it's at and create a parking, more parking for the D-Boy area. So that's what we did.
Yeah, it looks good. Really good.
Yeah, I think.
Everybody did an awesome job and, and it was a long time coming, so.
A long time.
Yeah, but I mean, the community helped. I understood, did farmers come in and help too?
Monday morning, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, we, so then I just worked and the landfill guys had to work because of that stuff coming in. We ended up using their truck doing some hauling as well.
Yeah. Well, thank you for everything.
Everybody was involved, which is good. So we have a grant for the needsment for the power company, Shippensburg Power Company, GBA has Indian. That's like the tire shop.
Yeah, yes. Not too sure about that. I was hoping Bryce was here, but. Sounds good to me. I guess we've done it before with.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you, reviewed all this, has Bryce reviewed the contract? Or the agreement?
I mean, it's just a utilities.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the, the grant of easement. Underground utility with a stipulation that it's reviewed and okay by the district attorney.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And then we have salary resolutions for Robert Parish and William Mon. So what was Parish that was?
What happened?
We have an error for the range of state and the budget.
So you're talking about in our paperwork that we have for the budget?
And I did correct all that before I sent it in to the state and there was less than $600 difference.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, it's not that much, so.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and approve the salary resolution for Parish as presented effective June 1st, 2021.
I'll second.
A motion and a second for approval. All those in favor? I motion that. And then Mr. Longtime?
No, that is. Is that the same thing?
No.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make the same motion for Blonde.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Good job.
So landfill, nothing other than.
You know, they, they got 100 truck loads of stuff to deal with. Got the permit done, so that's a, that's a big deal, fairly big deal. Nothing else really. We, we did go clean up grass town, burn area again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't think of much else. I apologize. I didn't get, get with Mitch. I used to do, but I didn't see him this morning. I sprayed.
Well, you saw him all weekend.
Yeah. Not much though. You'd be surprised. I was down in the pit and I had to go at noon, so.
There was a big hole there that they had to really work on. It was amazing to watch that. I don't know what the equipment was called, Tracor or whatever, doing all that work.
It was pretty impressive. There was a gentleman there from. He said it would be 100 truck loads. He got that right, but he said it would take five days to do this little project.
He underestimated.
Highmark didn't say nothing.
Yeah.
Jim Lynch was there representing Highmark. He didn't say nothing, just smiling. Those guys are experts at moving material.
Yeah, that guy and that Tracor is just fantastic.
And then on recycling, we are getting a lot of recyclables and Joe is keeping up with the handling and everything. So it's, I mean, I have people coming in with truck, pickup truck bedloads of plastic and stuff, so.
We're saving it for good.
Yeah.
Bryce, we've already looked at the Road Department and the grant of easement. Did you have a chance to look at that?
We've already approved it, but we thought.
Yeah, I did. That's just a regular. Yes. No issues.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Senior Center, Crystal is not here. She is cooking. Just because of shortage of personnel. We have asking for approval to advertise and hire a head cook position and the assistant cook, which is a cook one-two position. Asking for approval to put those out there as both of those employees have indicated they are leaving us.
So they haven't left yet?
They have not left yet, but we need to have approval so we can advertise.
I'll make the motion to approve advertising for a head cook position and one-two position for the senior center.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Buildings and going.
Good morning.
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 We have four weeks, that's serious. Seems like Big Meadow has been targeted.
Really?
It's been happening to go out there seven times a week. I don't know who or why, if it's just happenstance, but it's happening.
Yeah.
Spitting lots of times doing that. A positive note, the pool started today early. There was going to start today and they actually showed up late yesterday afternoon. And we're here until almost seven o'clock prepping it. So they'll be in today after 10:00 to do the patchwork. The film and stuff that they're working on to get the temporary.
For their temporary fix.
And my guys have been, well, we had to drain it. And that's the dirtiest the pool's ever been in the bottom because there was nothing to mix with it.
Oh, yeah.
It was really thick full of debris and so it was really rough. It was exceptionally rough on one of my guys. He spent one day in that hole. And the other one was in the pool house, trying to put everything together so we could have the bathrooms open also. And then I spent quite a bit of time out here getting rid of issues out there. And working with electricians about stuff out at my patch, firehouse. Where they're washing the dryer. They have an undersized hot water tank. They have a small, like three gallons.
It's in the bathroom and.
Yeah, so that has the upsides to the commercial.
Because of the washing machine? Cold water wash, just like home.
No. No.
Doesn't get things sanitized that way. And because it is a commercial class building, it has to be a commercial class water tank, which is, they're a little bit more expensive. I have to do the, talk to Bruce about upgrading the power for that particular location also. Because it takes a two.
Is it still going to fit in that?
One fit in that room is just, it's just in a corner. It's just going to be bigger. And then we're maybe working on, still working on lighting. They're working at the community center today, still working on the power outlets. This weekend, we have the car show. We'll be working on prepping that up over the next day. Marking the sprinklers. I bought a bunch of, five or six markers to be used so we can mark the sprinklers taller and they have reflective on it, so instead of using the small stakes. And these will be easier to pull in and out of the ground. Talk to the game and then tell me about this and we're excited that we've got something like that. It'll help also with frontier days because then when they're guiding, when people are coming in, it'll also show with the sprinklers you're at, so they can just gather and look and put it back to the board.
How many cars usually come in?
You know, it's very year to year. I mean, I entered it like three years in a row, three or four years in a row. And it was pretty busy.
Always, always packed.
Yeah. I couldn't give you the numbers just, you know, it's not my event, but I would estimate, I'd say 50. They were between 35 to 50 cars.
Had two people last night at the high school awards ceremony that said to bring in cars. That was cool.
I, it's a great event. It's, it's very. We've been doing weeds. These cemeteries, Unionville in particular was done before. I was, I was fortunate enough to get into, to get, go up there and take care of fire break around that cemetery and to reback all the way down. So that was taken care of. Another matter that it's, it's getting worse and worse is the kids in the park are becoming an extreme nuisance, not just in the park, but around, around the whole building. I mean, there'll be groups of 20 of them on the stairs or right up climbing the top.
Nighttime?
No, no, this is like. Like four or five o'clock in the afternoon. They have been crawling up the concrete bathrooms. They've been crawling up the old exterior bathrooms on this building, which is right by the judges chambers. They've been crawling on top of our sheds. And up the clock wall.
Good screen.
What age group are these?
These kids are ranging, I guess, between six to 12. Maybe a couple of older, but they're quite a big group. I know that there's an ordinance in this town that what's businesses done at five o'clock that we can ask kids to leave at that time. I don't want to do that, but I would have been able to not have our things being abused. I mean, they're, they're peeing on the floor in the bathrooms while they're open.
Yeah.
There's no reason for this. They're.
I don't know, but I think there's probably a better way to address it than send kids out of the park.
Well, no, I agree. There's got to be some, speaking to some parents that I'm working with. Police department, sheriff's trying to get them to do that with also the juvenile probation. I've been more around talking to parents, but I want to bring this up because it's a community issue for me right now. So it's flexible. We have, you know, visitors coming through and we have children just running them up. That's very important to us.
Well, in the meantime, we could watch, be vigilant. I don't think it would be, I think it would be a good idea to maybe have an officer come by and talk to the kids about it, just remind them how unsafe it is. And there's a high power line connecting to that shed.
Service.
Yeah.
That is, I've had to tell kids to stop.
Yeah, and that's what they're doing. They're, they're actually grabbing onto the pipe.
Well, then there was one young man that was throwing a knife.
Yeah.
And it bounced off.
Off the power line?
No.
And then they're sticking into the trees.
Oh.
And, and it bounced off and came close to our custodian.
Yeah.
So I mean, this is a real concern.
I've already had a brief conversation with Bryce about it. And I've spoken to Darryl and Mike Ben C. Bo. And I've spoken to a couple of the officers over the juvenile probation, that they're going to try to be more vigilant. But it's, I think it's a more of a, I think responsible for the trouble too. It's not, shouldn't be us.
Well, school's almost out. I know that when school lets out the kids, they congregate at the park. They get a little rowdy if they act like kids.
Well, I agree.
So, you know, I can run out and tell them to get up my lawn, be that guy.
And you know, that's just that I want them to be here. I just don't want to use our, our facility.
I think maybe after school, things will calm down, but you know, in the meantime, we'll, we'll address it. We'll talk to them.
Good job.
The cemeteries are good. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Everybody appreciates that.
Yeah, we're also getting ready for the baseball stuff to start up.
Yeah. You're keeping busy.
Cemetery did look good. We went out and made the flags and I mean, it was amazing. It just looks good.
Right.
Thank you. I'd like to jump ahead to number seven with your frontier days since they're here, ready and waiting. Good morning.
You need to state your name for the record, even though we know.
Sherri Stevens with Frontier Days. Love that Frontier Day. What we're trying to do is ask permission to use the area in front of, behind, we knew to, for extra parking. A couple of years ago, we ran into a problem where everybody was parking at Safeway and Safeway didn't have the parking places for their customers. And they got a little bit upset, which I understand. So in 2019, we did use the overflow of that parking area and it worked out beautifully. So it will cost nothing to you guys.
People just knew to go park their.
Um, we put out signs. We put up a sign in Safeway's parking lot at both entrances that says Safeway's parking only. And our frontier parking can park across the street. And then we have signs that say you can park in this area for frontier days. So we, we do all of that, but you know, you got to go through the loops.
Yeah, so that's what we're doing. And we appreciate you asking. I don't have any problems with that at all. I think it's great. I'll make a motion then that to allow the frontier days to use the window property for.
Okay, next, the fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth of August.
And I will second that motion.
A motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion that.
Thank you.
See how easy that was?
I didn't think it'd be a problem, but.
Thank you, Sherri, very much. Maybe we'll see you this afternoon at one. Okay.
I don't see anybody here from the library. I don't see anybody here from Fire Department. Or Department. Anybody on?
John Donn, Chairman, Sean Burke here, Grass Valley Fire.
Morning, Sean.
Good morning. Things are proceeding to pace out in Grass Valley. The burn ban is still not on. We're going to try and hold it for a couple more weeks, let people get their yards cleaned up. And our big news is we, our brush truck is still down. I'm expecting a report from the Ford dealership any minute now. They were working on it yesterday. And I'm not sure if they made any headway on it or not, so as soon as I have some news on that, I will let you know.
That's it?
End of report.
Good job. Thank you. We had a good meeting out there. Okay. Community Center, update of matters relayed to the community center rental contract scheduling setups and renting of facility.
Well, Dix, her treat is first day was yesterday. She spent most four hours with her yesterday and. Okay, and thank you Heidi for everything you've done. Bryce, we need to get Heidi keys to the community center.
Need to.
Oh, we already have it handled? Thank you.
We will.
And I don't think we have a lot on the calendar this month. We have the.
We have two more that's at this weekend. It already here in mid-month and.
Grad night is on more of our. And then grad night this weekend, right?
Yes.
Last night went well.
Good.
Has Bryce? Okay, cooperative intentions, nobody. IT Department. Take it away. Enlighten us. Make this clear.
Yeah.
Okay, so like, one thing I have really for you as far as department update is the information I sent over to you. So we have three proposals for internet service. We'll go through them one by one. The first sheet before each proposal that has a county seal in the top right corner, that, that document was not provided by the vendors. That is a document that I put together for you to try and help explain what it is that we're getting. So there, there's, there's a, there's a short summary in the top left. In the middle is kind of a diagram to explain where these different pieces fit. There is a table of connection speeds to kind of give you an idea of what, what speed means what. So the, the, I, I use the office training manual that I put together when we switched over to Office 365. It has a bunch of pictures and text as the guideline. So this the left-hand column is the speed. Right-hand column is how long it would take to upload or download that file at that speed. So to kind of, to kind of give you an idea in practical terms, what we're talking about as far as scope. And then on the right, on the bottom right, is a, the, the cost overview of each proposal. And behind that sheet are the, are the quotes and proposals themselves. So to start off with, and yeah, Jesse Katsaris from NMS here with us today, so if you have any questions for him, he's available to answer them. This is a, a wireless to the gateway solution, so on each of our spoke buildings, there would be, it, it's, it's, it's similar to what they already use for their internet service, just business class. So we'll have one gigabit transmission to our, the sheriff's office. And then from there, a one gigabit pipe to their office. And then from there, 200 by 200 megabit internet. It's 200.
200, I saw words, that's too much.
This, so this, the difference over what they, what they presented last time was 100 by 100, so for a three-year commitment. One hundred by one hundred. So for a three-year commitment, they're doubling their speed at the same cost. So this, this is, this is probably the simplest of the three proposals. It's just. It, it's, it's pretty turnkey. They, they'll, they'll install the radios. And, uh, we have, we have local resources right here in town that we can talk to with those. And then on the quotes that Jesse provided, I marked specifically which one, which is what, which is non-occurring and which is recurrent. Uh, so skipping forward a couple pages. Uh, we have a proposal from Sky Fiber. And we have Manabros here, if you have any questions, uh, for Sky Fiber. Um, so this, this is a similar deployment to the N N I S solution, just. I believe using a slightly different technology and. N N I S or Sky Fiber would have to verify that for me. Um, again, radios on top of the buildings that point to our hub. Um, and then a connection out to the internet. Um. So with, with Sky Fiber, basically the, the hub, all the, the courthouse, the annex and the end and the building point, sheriff's office, the sheriff's office. Points at a tower on top of Chevron. And then that out to the internet for. Um, so this, this is actually a pretty straightforward. Uh, solution as well. And we, and we do have local resources we can reach out to, uh, for help if needed. And then lastly. Um. Again, skipping ahead a couple of pages is a. A proposal from AT&T, who is our current service provider. Um, for the, the plans that we're on now, the, the standard internet plans. For the most part, we're at the, the, the highest stake in offer going there. Uh, what we have here is AT&T's dedicated internet service plus, um, AT&T switched ethernet over. With, with network on demand. Um. This is, this is more complicated, but at the same time, it's also the most configurable and scalable. Um, so basically, the, the way it would work is there would be a port at each building. That's rated for a specific, a specific se- speed. Um, that then go back to sheriff's office. And then from the sheriff's office, it goes out through the dedicated internet service to. So, um, with, so this is, so it's comparable within. Within the inside private part of the network, uh, with the other two solutions. Uh, but we can change what's called the committed information rate. So the, 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 the speeds, the links between the buildings actually go. Um, to be whatever, whatever we need. So if we need it higher, we can, we can pay more and bump it up. If we're not using, if we're not utilizing all that bandwidth on that link, we can lower our bill and go down on that link. Each, each hop, each segment is, um, can fit. Um, so. That it's one gig, one gigabit links between the buildings and then one hundred by one hundred out to the internet. Um. I would like to note that, uh, this is, this is standard pricing from AT&T for just these four buildings. We have Danny Vax from E T P. Uh, who is looking to partner with us for community-wide broadband. And he is, he is informing that he might be able to do better, um, as part of that outreach. Um, and also us adding more of our facilities into the mix. Um. With, with the other two proposals, there is a, uh, one-time non-occurring charge with AT&T's proposal. There's not, there. It's, it's all just one thing occurring. There, there's no one-time fixed cost.
So I have a question for Danny. Danny, um, on ATP, if we approve, um. You're going ahead with, you know, the letter of support. If we approve that, how, I realize you don't have a crystal ball. But how long before we might be looking at broadband installation? These, um, amounts that we have from the different vendors are for three years. So is it possible that, um, the broadband, it would be like after three years or during that?
No, it actually be quite soon. Contract that was actually, uh, sent over from AT&T would be the title contract.
Okay, so if we went with one of these three companies for, let's say, out of one year, just. We could do that. For the local, you know, to solve our initial problems that we're having right now. And then look at the other down the road. I mean, that's what the. I'm just looking at the price. Yeah.
That is standard pricing and we're, I talked about this with AT&T, it's that is standard pricing and if we get, uh, the, uh. The amount of initial purchase a little larger, they do our perspective pricing. And that is, I issued, I had sent over to them a list of the buildings that, that Justin has sent over, as well as every other building that's. Non-residential for them to start looking at.
Yeah. If we were, if we were, if we were looking at this solely based on cost. Um, I don't think that there's. A way that eighteen, AT&T could compete with Sky Fiber or N N I S purely in terms of costs.
And, and I, I see that. I have, I wrote down the comparison.
I have all three right in front of me. And, and, and when you start, when you look at all three and you look at the cost. Uh, I mean, I have one, two questions, but I mean, it, it's very obvious. Uh. One, one is where, where's the budget? Where, where do we come from? What's money?
This, this wouldn't, this wouldn't be until next year's budget.
Right. Understand that. I mean.
We don't have anywhere else to take.
Right. So did any of the departments put money in there for something like this in next year's budget? I didn't think so.
But we do have internet costs in everybody's budget right now. They may not be this correct amount, but there are costs.
Right, right now, it's all built through AT&T.
My concern is, is looking forward, if we want to attract businesses here, we need to figure out something. Community-wide, county-wide, not just concerning. The county offices. It needs to be county-wide.
So we have under this item, these three to compare. And then under the next one is where we have. Broadband.
The fiber, right?
That's, that's, uh, under, under Heidi's items. So I, I'm very narrowly scoped. I'm, I'm only talking about the areas over which I. But that's just us. It's just.
Wireless.
Um, though, no, that's, that's actually fiber. Danny's talking. It's the same, it's the same offering, just expanding it out to more facilities and. Pot and probably, and possibly not even just, um. County facilities. We're talking city, we're talking businesses, residents, you know, trying to, trying to get as big in order together. Um, you know, a, a cooperative. It, um, to bring down everybody's costs overall. Next, that's what you'd be talking about with Danny.
So the AT&T initially would cost us the forty-seven thousand a year. And, but in time, it might go down.
If there are more.
As if there's, there was more people. Now, if they do, AT&T to do fiber to us. Has to bring it in from the closest.
Right.
Area, right?
And, and.
The hospital I know has it.
The, the library, so the libraries. Go ahead.
The library is using entry, so we had, uh, wire rack, full fiber between all the schools, um, that is. Fiber that can be leased, so anybody who wants to lease fiber, there's fiber really cheap. Large fiber, they'll ban it to it. Uh, but we did get, um, installed, the. When we ran it, it becomes through library and there, and she was allowing us to put, uh, fiber somewhere. So, and she is the, the bad, department of the bad practice station, uh, it's fiber that is given to schools, hospitals and libraries for no cost.
Um, is your, is your term of theory, um, that you can certainly see with their fiber?
So, so, so we don't lease it? Land rack would lease it. So we don't lease our fiber through the school. There's just extra pairs, um, that land rack will stop. Another five, okay, will set. They own the fiber.
See, there's, there's, and, and AT&T has put some of their fiber. You, you see it. They, they've actually, I, I've seen their trucks around lately doing a lot of work on the place. So. I'm not sure exactly what their, what their, I don't know what their plans are, but they, they have been doing something.
So going with AT&T would be an investment in community fiber? I'm asking.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, I'll, I'll discuss that with.
So is the rest of it.
So one of the uses, one of the uses of the recovery act is broadband.
Yes.
Right. Okay, that's why it's the next item.
But, but that is one of the uses, so, okay.
Are there?
How long before it would take AT&T to do this?
Um.
I, I realize you're guessing.
Cause assuming, assuming you were to say yes today. I, I would, I would say. If, I, I, I'm sure if we said yes, it would be very.
I think we have three, uh, prices, three quotes in front of us. And the best quote. That also, uh, on a couple of reasons. One is money, of course. And then the also is the two hundred.
Well, there's no question that N N I S has the best quote as far as the yearly or the three-year amount. But if we're gonna make an investment in the community for broadband, this would help kickstart it.
There again, that's the next item on the agenda. We have three proposals in front of us. On the, on this agenda.
And this, when, with this contract, these contracts start?
When does it start? July one. In the next six years.
So can we go to the next item and then come back to this one?
Why? We're, we're, we're doing local internet.
Okay.
You have a problem making a decision on those three?
Wait, wait, Danny would bring me, um, would, would. Include county facilities and would be the same service, but the pricing would probably be different because it would be more to order. It basically has to be all of our, all of our local facilities. So not just, not just these four four, but like. The buildings around the shop, J P O office, road department.
Airport.
I, I included the airport.
TV, TV station.
That's right.
It could, it could be done. Um, we'd have to get, I don't, I didn't, I don't have information, so we have to get that information to Andy.
I'll be after, I'll be after, yes.
I can, I can, if, if you want, if you want me to go back another round with more, I can go back to.
That, that's a separate item. Yeah. Something that we, it's a want and it's also a need.
I'm, I'm sure that N N I S and Sky Fiber would be happy to provide proposals for more sites. So if you would like me to go back to them with more sites. Then I will, I will follow whatever direction you give.
We can follow up for, uh. TV proposal. Amanda.
So and when, I don't know, I can't see N N I S, but first, if I were in a couple of big N N I S, it would just be a one. I mean, you only have to sign up for one year and just to get you onto better internet quicker and then. Could, you know, within six months, you find something better, the fiber is available, but yet like I agree, just go with that. These are just to get you up and running and then, yes, I mean, you can do the. The, all of Juvenile and the Firehouse and all those other ones if you want. We're just trying to get you up and running as quickly as possible. I know that Sky Fiber is ready. You have boots on the ground. They provided internet. School district. When we alerted, it was within two, three months, you were up and running, um, their internet. And so it. So just to get you going and then eventually, my experience at the school district was that. Sky Fiber and then it took the state, the free internet, the rural part, the, and she, it took them about a year and a half. To get the fiber all built, ready to go, and then we switched back to them. And so what I'm saying is, you know, just to get you up and going. Wireless would be the way to go at first, but then, you know, find something else you're only locked in for a year or a second.
And then of all the other outlining offices that you guys have, we have, we give them internet anyways. So the proposal would be. And then we would even, like I said, you guys have the opportunity to get fiber for no install cost. Do it. And then with us, immediately you have to keep us for a year. Let's do whatever you guys want, what they can need for six months. Seven months, seven, but you know, if you guys. Or are you doing ninety-five percent of the opposite things?
As a department head, I can tell you that we need faster internet.
Yeah.
All of our programs run over the network. And when you have to wait two minutes to bring up someone's taxes, it's frustrating.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm ready for a motion.
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay, all right. So my motion is this, that we go with N N I S and their proposal. Um, and as Jesse has said, whether it's a couple of months or six months or whatever, just do it on a monthly basis. And that we go with AT&T's, um. Option for fiber and we go ahead and start that process immediately. And then however long it takes them to actually. It takes them to actually get it connected, and then we'll switch over, that's my motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
As long as we get fiber here. That's all I'm looking forward to.
I would love fiber.
It bypassed us, why can't we get it here?
Jesse, you weren't here last time we met, and we had this discussion, and I brought up the point of, uh. Getting fiber to, to on peak for the purpose of obtaining. TV channels, that's where I don't have to get a, a signal here, is, which, which personally gets signal from three different places. Uh, fiber would be, if it's possible, it would be ideal, and that's where that came from. So, food for thought, you need to think about that.
Eventually.
Well, Emily, they're.
So, the, the, the plan, the plan is especially since the, uh, because of the response to our art. Two, two and a half years ago, um, the, doing everything all smash was just. Ashes, no, with knowing I wanted to do it, so we're, we're starting centrally, we're, we're getting the core. And then gradually building now as important.
And Emily already has free internet, and it's AT&T connected like broadband somehow. That's provided, so I'm not sure that they're gonna need anything, I have to double check with what they've got, but, um, the gentleman out in Emily, and I forgot his name.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it's, I should, but I don't. Okay, so we have a direction.
We have, yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
So moving now.
Thank you, Amanda, for your questions.
Now, moving on. To the next agenda item. Economic development and, uh, Brownfield and broadband.
Sure. Yeah, okay. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to everybody again, morning. Um, I do wanna talk a little more about the fiber network and what this is, because this is the pinnacle of technology networking today. I'm gonna give you a little bit of history to break down to this point. Um, in the old days, uh, when we just telephoned, there were cables that were probably, because with one cable, there was every home call. IP telephony, through a lot of, is how you then compress that to get so much out of a single connection. IP means internet protocol, it doesn't mean internet, is how it's compressed, gets so much on there. Cloud technology's been around. The old I D M mainframes, dumb terminals, that was cloud. Your phone system today, albeit analog phone system, it's a cloud phone system, centralized. The brains of the central office. The type of network that AT&T offers under switch ethernet is a private network. An east, a private ethernet network, and this is different, especially in government, when you're dealing in highly sensitive data. Your traffic on private network does not go out over the internet, it travels on a different layer among your locations, it's kept private, phone calls are on this network. Only when you need to make a phone call outside of your environment, or to make a connection to outside the environment, do you go out with the internet connection. And as, uh, Justin has been working on the hub at, uh, at the sheriff's office, so, the network itself, ethernet port. Is like a magic port at this, at this stage, and that, I can have bandwidth on demand, I can mark it up, put it down, I can make a connection between. Uh, Justin, between this building and another, I can try to take that one down, and I can make two connections, I mean, I can just configure this thing any way that I need. It's an incredible toolset that AT&T offers for, for multiplication clients, that's designed specifically for that. Um, included, layered on that, boy, data security, wifi. I haven't represented AT&T a long time, but only recently at the high school today. And they have opened up the door, let's do everything that I talked about. And that is to do fiber to all of the buildings, to do the citywide wireless inside, all of the residents, et cetera. And so, all of them, this is stepping stuff, no, let's go from here to there in one shot, it's gonna take some time, first thing is just get the internet in. Internet being the, uh, the H T E T T switch ethernet, to get good pricing for it, so. Take a little bit of time to get, I've gotten working on your buildings, but, you know, if I could talk to some of the other non-Persian County governmental bodies. You guys wanna place this order with AT&T at the same time, we can put it all together, but the pathway starts with. AT&T saying, yes, there's a, there's a government client committed to, uh, the switch ethernet network, their premium product, okay? That's a platform, it's not just buying some services, you're buying into that platform to expand it out, they are going to make the commitment to you. And they told me, we can get there, we can do the wireless, we can do the cyber, do all of it, do it all together, that's one entity, one cheapest. Uh, in the end of the day, so, simpler to maintain, better performing, and higher, you know, higher reliability, all of that that comes with having. A tier one, um, end-to-end solution that's properly designed and developed for you. So, AT&T is, you know, working on it, I've been giving them all the information, so they're working on pricing right now. Um, because I could, you know, I could max the standard pricing, but why does that complication get custom price? And, and see what that can do, so that's where I'm starting, is getting that custom pricing for you, so you can see where that's gonna look at, okay? And then, and then if you tell me, Dan, go ahead, please, go ahead and get pricing for cybersecurity, go ahead and get pricing for the boy as well. And wifi for our buildings, that to me is kind of a whole connectivity suite, which could be outsourced, so then Justin would then, okay, instead of. Having to maintain that infrastructure, it's done, and even, open up things that are needed, so, in the world of fast-moving technology. It's good to have a good major partner, and not be just relying on buying different pieces, and I have to put it together, they're a full integration partner, and they'll do it to the end. So, starts with getting pricing, it's a later design, but, uh, and it might be faster than things, so. Uh, that's all I have for today, as a matter, uh, authorize me to move forward, proper negotiation, it's just normal pricing, uh, and then we can just go. Of that pricing, what is it that you wish to purchase now? I'll get your pricing, don't say you have to buy it all, but, let's get the pricing for the big picture, and, and then decide. But this is the choices, which would be first, which was second, how we would decide that. Or your question on TV, remember that, okay? I did talk to AT&T, they're selling direct TV, so, they are not integrating direct TV into this. And that, I tried, that's David, because they're, AT&T is selling that whole. So, but it doesn't mean there's not a sell-out way, getting fiber up to a mountain top, that's, that's big time bucks, okay?
Even wireless?
No, not wirelessly, no, no, wirelessly, fiber is, not wireless, now, you can, you can gain for several miles, you got a lot of site. To get all the time in the military, works just fine. And, so, once you do that, this is full IP, you can send your video and date over, just like anything else.
Can we also include like the industrial park and other sites?
It all, it's all included, it's all included, now, there's nothing there for them to build to, no customers or order, this is the first order, but. They, they know that I've gotta get that industrial part, okay, and I gotta get Cosberg opened up as well.
Yes.
It's all headed there, they promised this is, we can get there, and they will do it, whereas I originally came here and said. I S was gonna, you know, maybe do some of that cableing and, and team us was, et cetera. Not necess, not necessary at this point, because when AT&T says they will do that, then they will put it out, they will hire, they will contract. One signature, and they're responsible, so, it might be that I S does it under their name, but I'm not gonna come in here and say I want I S to go build it, at least not right now. Okay, let's see where AT&T goes on that industrial part, but I've got a, a, you know, this, you know, basically, place that first order, show us your series, right? And then, but Dan, I mean, they're opening up all the wires, okay, so I've now got them working on some of my parks. This was un. Unbelievable that AT&T actually has the capabilities to, not the capabilities, that they have the interest to actually do it, so we're looking. Seventy parks in New Jersey and do that value with them, so, they are opening up all these different divisions, like I said, I can sell ninety-nine percent of what they have, and I've not. And I don't know everything they have, right, uh, that in the higher realm, but I'm dealing with it now, the person at the high school realm. Who's opening it up, saying, start here, get him started, we'll get you.
You're ready for a motion?
Uh, Bryce, would you, would your comments on defer to the commission entirely?
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize, um, a letter of support for ATP to negotiate and project manage. AT&T internet service orders, et cetera.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion that.
Merma, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You got your first order with us.
Yeah, I like, thank you very much, look, we're gonna do a good job, are there any other questions, or any comments, or any special request? Nope, fine, I will communicate to Justin, ready?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, Jan and I submitted our request for proposal to the governor's office of economic development in regards to the. Regional Development Authority, um, that went off without a hitch Thursday morning. And then we received a email back from the governor's office saying they didn't like the name that we chose, which was Nevada I A, Regional Development Authority. So, um, Jan and I are a little irritated and baffled, um, and we will be. We're brainstorming, we can't figure out something else that is, you know, a meaningful and impactful and searchable on the internet. For a name, um, but we will be, uh, making our. Our, I don't wanna say argument, because I don't wanna argue with the governor's office of economic development, but you know, we'll be making a case to them as to why we do this. The right main choice for us, and then we'll, we'll see where we go. And, in other news, um, I will be working with Don Vetter and Cheryl Gonzalez on the next round of Brownsfield Grants. And, um, we will be working on, and, uh, our final workshop for the redevelopment area. You know, proposals that we were, kinda have a put on a board, so we'll be firming up those, uh, those plans also. And then, um, when you get to CARES Act money, I would like to request some funds for workforce development, so I don't know if I need to stick around, or, you know.
Do you have a proposal?
I, I did not write out a proposal, but I did print out the, um. I wanted for workforce development, we need to fund an instructor for the next three years in order for this to become permanent. And for it to become sustainable, um, an instructor is going, an instructor plus some, it's gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars a year. And so, um, Jan and I are looking towards, um. Fundraising, I hate fundraising, but anyways, trying to get pledges and so forth, and from different entities, and, um, I believe. Um, economic development wise for the CARES Act, that workforce development and, and helping our citizens, it could be qualified. Uh, for that, and so, it's a, at the least, I'm hoping for maybe to get ten thousand dollars a year from the county for the next three years.
Oh, okay, cause I thought you said.
I need a hundred thousand dollars, but this is for the region.
Oh, for the region, not just for us?
Yeah, not just for us, I mean, hey, if you wanna give me a hundred thousand. I'd love more than ten thousand a year, you know, quite honestly, but, you know, I'm, I'm just hoping for something, um.
So what is considered the region?
Yes, that was. So the region, it's, so it's Pershing County, Humboldt, and there's a little bit, I believe, in Elko and Ely as well. And so, we're trying to hit up all the cities and counties, and Nevada Gold Mines, uh, there's a foundation with them that, that. I don't know if they're, if they're ready to pull the trigger or not, but we will be talking to them. Um, I don't know if Lith, if lithium Nevada would be one of those, you know, um, definitely, I want to be talking to Rochester. Um, in, in, uh, and so forth, so, we're trying to raise money to make this sustainable. We can't, we can't do it off of ransom, and it's, it can't be done volunteer-wise either. Um, so, we're serious about workforce development, I think this is the time to pull the trigger. So, that's what I'm hoping for, but I just brought up something else for you guys, sorry.
No, it's okay, it helps.
So, over the course of three years, you need a hundred thousand dollars a year, correct?
Total for the.
Total for, yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next three years to, to make sure that this stays to become a, a G B C. You know, recognized and so forth, G B C is already a, a huge sponsor of it, but they pretty much told us, we can't get a teacher on it for three years. They're not gonna be able to keep it on either, and it's just so hard for Jan and I to be able to, to keep this going also.
Is Jan gonna present this to Humboldt?
Absolutely.
So, if we. So, if we pitched in each county like twenty-five thousand or something a year?
It would make a nice dent in, in getting there.
Humboldt, if they did it, that would be fifty, and then Elko.
And I'm gonna be going towards this, to ask the city the same thing, also, you know, city of the block, and she will be doing it.
They're getting a huge amount of recovery funds.
So, we're, we're asking everybody, you know, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, but this is, you know. This is where workforce development is, that it can get it funded, or it's done, I will be able to work on it.
This is a small investment for our communities.
Yeah. But what I'm thinking of is if we get the city to pitch in some, city of Winamaka, cause they'll be getting that, the counties. We should be able to cover the whole thing without you going too big, all over the world.
That's really where it is, is where, where, you know, we were swinging by on the seat of our pants last year, but now we need to be serious for this year.
Yeah. No, that would be awesome, okay. That helps.
All right, I think that's everything for me.
Perfect, thank you.
So, let, let Trudy know that she needs to come to our next meeting, okay, and, and I think it would be on the agenda.
Sure, and, Justin, um, I need to get those laptops, get them back to the county center.
Yeah.
If they're ready, I'll take them back today. Okay, great, thank you very much.
We can do public defender before our nine forty time event. We have a written report from the public.
They have fourteen new cases in May. And they disposed of four, so. Last, in March, they had twenty-one, something happened.
You have any comments on public defender? None? Uh, so, a couple minutes code enforcement? You pinged up payers on? I have to, I, I asked Fran to look at an issue, which I thought was. Was a, an abandoned, another abandoned R V, this went along Upper Valley Road. I talked to Fran about it, and, uh, the next day, it was gone.
Well, we'll let Fran have credit for that.
I, I think, I think Fran did it all. Okay, still a couple more minutes, Lacy Donaldson, anything?
Um, our tax sale ran from. Friday the twenty-first or Tuesday the twenty-fifth, and it was far more successful than I even thought it would be. It started with a hundred thirty-seven parcels, and it sold all the twelve.
Oh my gosh, that's awesome.
I didn't think we'd sell. So, I'll have to give a break on that. Um, we should get our final economy profit for assets on Friday, so I'll bring that to you next week.
So the twelve that didn't sell, are they?
They're all.
Okay, that's fine.
But I think we had like close to fifty, so, I was shocked that you have that sold.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I have is we're working on the one-year certificate of the treasure steve for next Monday, from your. And if I do hire the resignation yesterday. So, I'm, I'm back in need.
Really?
Yeah.
Did you, is it this, do you have a whip or?
I don't think she was ready to come back to work. It is more than.
Whoa.
Oh goodness, okay.
Okay, I have nine forty, we have a timed event, a public hearing. And it's a public hearing on a proposed ordinance number three, four, seven, amending chapter two point one two of the Persian County Code, the Persian County Economic Development Authority. Heidi, you have any input on this? Any other public input?
I'm not able to reach for them anymore, so I think this is all those three, and that's why I'm here.
Well, I think it's a good move. So we're going from nine to seven.
Nine to seven.
Will we be able to meet quorum then?
Yes.
We certainly hope so.
Yes. And I believe dropping it down to seven, I'm, I'm sitting right around five to six members and it could four members. I really have one day to see, and I think they're interested in how that vacancy filled. I'm very, I'm very positive about this.
Okay, good.
Well. That's the public hearing and all the comments.
The other public comment, anything on Zoom? Seeing none, hearing none.
I will make a motion. Can I do that since I sit on this floor?
Pardon me?
Yeah. I can. Then I will make a motion to. Ordinance number three forty seven. Amending chapter two point one two of Persian County Code. And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, motion. We have another public meeting at nine forty five. Ryan, do you have very much to?
Large ones before the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice seeing you. Okay. Bryce, do you have anything?
I don't.
Oh, you skipped.
I don't.
Holy cow. No Karen Stevens. Jerry Allen is not here, he thought he was going to be, he may still. Find his way.
Public defenders right there.
I was wondering who's behind the post.
It's, it's my bad A K. It's, ah, work, but I don't know what to do with myself when I'm at work, so I'm just gonna come here. Else.
Who's this little?
This is Charlotte. She didn't find it exciting.
Oh my gosh. I'm sorry.
That's why I'm not at work today. Here, come say hi in person since it's been like fifteen months. But I don't have a lot.
Wait, we see your report. Did they add to that or?
No, I, I think the usual new stuff, you know, typically revolves around what's going on with the Department of Defense. On the plus side, you know, we did another training for continuing legal education credits that I was there to a year. And that's definitely the positive side, I would say, what they've done is they've really organized a lot more training opportunities at no cost. And so that's been a real benefit. There's been a lot of discussion about whether we're gonna be trying to, sorry, didn't make a laugh about this, but it's just not interesting to me. About hiring a social worker under the Public Defender's Office with COVID funds and I, nah, you know, that just doesn't seem appropriate or even a needed thing. And I'm sure Heidi or anyone else in the committee can think of a dozen better angles that might match up there. But other than that, you know, it's, it's business as usual, things are good.
Business as usual.
It is, I mean, you know, we set this up here and business as usual means it's working good as far as, you know, I'm concerned. But no real extraordinary issues, you know, we've had a lot of changes in the law since July first, twenty twenty. Just kind of making some challenges and seeing where that all shakes out. It's just, to me, it's been an unprecedented amount of change in a short amount of time. It's good.
Thanks for coming and thanks for bringing Charlotte.
I'm two blocks away.
Have a fun day.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do. Go dip our feet in the river after lunch and. Take it easy and enjoy the day, right? And mom will be back tonight. Welcome to the studio, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay, we have a nine forty five timed event, it's a public hearing on a proposed ordinance number three, four, eight. Amending chapter fifteen point oh four of the Persian County Code by adopting the twenty eighteen International Building Code. The International Residential Code, twenty eighteen Uniform Mechanical Code, the twenty seventeen National Electric Code. And the twenty eighteen International Energy Conservation Code. Along with the twenty eighteen Northern Nevada Amendments to such codes. Come on up.
You're supposed to be timing events, I guess.
Yes, elementary school track and field, I'm sorry, but.
Okay, all right, we won't keep doing chatting here.
So I don't have it. I don't have anything on the, on the updates other than why.
On the, what have we just read?
On the, yeah.
We're just.
Yeah.
We've already talked about it.
Yeah.
Well, I've got a question.
Okay.
Well, no, you go first.
No, I was.
Oh, so what, what happened with the twenty four inches on the frost line and the other? Because I don't see anything in here.
It's in the code.
That, that's gonna remain the same.
Yeah.
That, that, well, actually it's not gonna remain the same, the twenty four inches is going to, well, it'll, it will be reduced to twenty four inches.
Right, from the thirty six.
And if they are, and it will be left up to the contractor, if they are. If they're digging through. Expansive soils, then it'll be up to them to provide a source.
But I didn't see anything in here.
That, i- it is in the Northern Nevada Amendments, which is, is part of.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we were taking care of that.
It is.
And then the fees that are in here for the different things, the planning, the, are these the current fees that we have now?
Yeah. Those are what we're using too.
I'm glad I'm not building anything, so.
And actually, those are, those are actually where we are cheapest at the state.
Yes, we are.
Oh, and, and I realize that, but I'm thinking, you know, just me.
The price of lumber costs more than our building.
Yes. Over seven bucks, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is crazy. I have a fortune in my yard.
I was talking to a homeowner and he was building, well, he was going to build a home. But it was with today's lumber prices, it was going to cost him an additional two hundred thousand dollars to buy something.
An additional.
An additional two hundred. Just in lumber.
That's crazy.
Two hundred grand, just, just in lumber.
Yeah.
So do you know why it's gonna?
Supply and demand.
Yeah.
The, the lumber mills can't keep up with the demand.
Even, even a pole barn, which is mostly metal. Still in a pole barn, you have the posts, which are wood.
Yeah, your posts, and usually your trusses.
Yeah. So it's, it's not only a house, it's affected the.
Pole barn.
Yeah. I was gonna build a playhouse for my kids this summer, but I didn't want it to be most expensive.
Building.
No doubt.
The problem is he graduating by the time. Yeah.
That being said, I will make motion to. Approve ordinance number three forty eight, amending the chapter fifteen point zero four of Persian County. Code by adopting, do I have to read every one of these?
Uh, no, you can just adopt the ordinance as read.
Adopt the ordinance, isn't it? And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance number three, four, eight, all those in favor of.
I.
I, 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 I motion. Good job. And then we have a kind of conference, we have to wait. I'm gonna do a litigation first, it's up to you, we just need one. I wish you'd do Lori real quick, come on up, Lori.
Actually, these are, I just got those in store.
Oh, sorry, okay. Good morning, everybody.
Okay. We have. Department update for one, inter, integral contract for the state and Nevada Department of More Vehicles and the Persian County. Assessor's office affected June thirtieth, twenty twenty one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, which is a two year. Agreement.
It's not only a two year agreement, yes.
I think before you start, I, I would just like to be on the same page and clarify why the agenda item was changed without. Professional courtesies of including me in the conversation. I guess I'm a little confused by the extra work that I did to present the informational packet to you all and invite you to come back and visit me, but. Bryce graciously called and explained there was a concern, but not being aware. Sort of confused me. So I guess I would like to ask the board to explain to me, if you didn't inquire any concerns, why was that changed?
So during the agenda formation process, concern was brought up that if there's not a minimum time, that the D M B has to be open. And it could be closed and then that service wouldn't be provided.
Yeah, and that's my, the biggest, I guess, worry.
I, I guess if you would have included me, I could have explained to you, due to Bryce's helping me get that removed, that it was removed throughout the entire state. They cannot tell a county or a county budget when to work employees in D M B. There was no threat of D M B being removed. Because of Bryce's work, all assessors and clerk treasures and recorders received the amended contract with that language being removed.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't do much at all.
Nobody, so you, you, and that.
So I can't really take.
Well, oh, go for it, take it.
But thank you all.
But I mean, my other coworkers.
Actually, if the D M B, in entering into the contract with counties, they combine the county's contract. I agree with you that they don't have the authority to dictate to the counties at the satellite offices how long they need to be open for. But the concern from the board was merely, you know, are the citizens going to be better off? With the minimum time or, you know, should we just remove the minimum time? And it wasn't intended as a slight on you at all.
No, no, I just, I, I go out of my way to try and provide a professional courtesy and all I'm asking of the board is that that would be extended to me as well. I'm not mad, I'm just asking to be included. It's a, it's a department that I have.
In a, in a agenda prep, meeting where there's. No out, no input from other, other people like, it's just a meeting to set the agenda.
Okay.
That's all it is. So, but it does bring up a good discussion amongst commissioners as to which way you would like this to go. Do you want a contract with a, the, the twenty hour limit in there or not?
Well, I don't know that we need a contract with D M B specifying hours, but we, we need to have an understanding that. That it's an important service that we provide to the community, which I know that Lori agrees to. And that we keep the office open as much as possible, but I don't know that we need something in our contract with D M B that states that. And that's why I provided the informational.
Did they not remove it?
It is. They did. Yeah, so we don't.
So we don't even, it's not even a conversation.
I guess my question would be then, if you'd like the twenty hours, then do we only need a twenty hour employee? I mean, there's two ways for me as the person that has it coming out of her budget and has two new employees at this time. That it doesn't, as Larry said, how long does it take to come up to speed? I was the appraiser five years and I was just starting to fully understand. Yes, my brain was twenty years older than my current appraiser, it may only take her a couple of years. But they may not be able to, sorry.
Things change every.
Every year, every legislation, so to, even though I'm having new background check. He and V may not have a backup some days. We have new construction, a roll of clothes. Lacy's deeds to her sales, she'll be taking delinquent tax sales. Just so you have awareness of what goes on with two new employees and myself and Darrell, for Darrell running the D M B. Eight hours a day roughly can often be a concept. But I, I did say, that's why I put it in writing, that it's an important service, because there has been. Some chirping that I don't feel that way, that is not true. It is very hard to meet statute. Even when I was fully staffed with ladies that have been there four and six years. So now I have ladies that have been there two weeks full time and two months. So when I saw that language, my thought was now they're starting to tell me that I can't, you know, use Darrell in my office. I have to accommodate their services first. Well, as far as the D M B contract, I, it, it's already taken the hours out, so. So I don't see a problem with approving the contract, because as has already been mentioned, they can't dictate to you or anyone else how many hours. And we are providing a service and I. I don't doubt that, I don't know that we have to tell you to keep it open a minimum of twenty hours. I mean, you're gonna keep it open as long as you can and provide that, yeah. Saying that it has to be open. There's no statutes at all. When we take oath as elected officials, we meet our statutory requirements, that's a courtesy, considered a courtesy sign. And also, and also at other counties, D M B is located in other offices. You know, clerks, clerks offices. Yeah, you know. For whatever reason, it's in the assessors and that's fine, it's just, I want you all to have awareness of some of the, the challenges that we face. I mean, I've gone two years without a real property appraiser and one year next month without a personal property appraiser. And we're starting to catch up, it's great. I'm just saying, by changing this, are you saying that we'd like it only open twenty hours a week? Because I interpret it in two different formats.
I wanted it out in the open for discussion. Yeah. So another part of that discussion from last meeting, and you were gonna look into it, was can, how can we raise the two dollar fee?
Those are statutory.
Yeah, you do, that'll look.
Yeah, it's gotta be the legislature that would raise those.
So we just can't do it?
No.
No.
Answers that question.
And then I think Lori asked the question, does the board want to set a minimum time? For the D M B, I don't know if that was answered.
Well, I can set a time, I just, this, this sort of confused me not being.
Well, the only reason, the only reason it was on there, Lori, is because they, they wanted to know whether there should be a minimum time.
I mean, I could say it's only open Tuesdays and Thursdays, there's no statute, they cannot. And I say this professionally, they cannot tell you when to have a courtesy site open. It's a courtesy. We're doing work for the state of Nevada out of the Persian County budget, the taxpayers' budget.
But our public depends on.
Yes.
On it being open.
They do. They do, and so does Elko and Washo and.
I'm just worried about right here, I don't care about you.
Well, they, they inundate us, Larry, so I mean, people come three hours from Elko because they'd rather come. It's faster to drive here.
Really?
Yeah, so we're being inundated from all over the state.
Still. They haven't caught up after COVID, you know, they haven't caught up after COVID. DMV andrea, I was like, are they opening, if they have anything, I posted. So, yeah, they don't have people.
Yes, and so during COVID, the governor and Julie Butler, who's director of DMV, said we could deny those services to out-of-county people, and sometimes their titles are too complicated and Darrell has my permission to tell them they have to go respectfully to a full-service DMV. We were not, we're not trained in titles, Darrell has a knack for titles. Really, we could just say we're doing registrations and renewals, that's it, we are not a title entity. He has, he has an excellent gift for titles, he's very good at it, so he, he likes to help, we do not have to do them.
Yeah. I, I realize that sometimes it's, the office has been closed, but has there been an issue that I'm not aware of recently or something is causing this to be requested?
I asked it just to be removed, the language, that's all, Bryce helped me, but then so um my original agenda item did, was not at length, but then, as the gentleman said, it was changed during the agenda preparation, is that what you all call it, so I'm, I don't know.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with DMV. And um cause that, that is as it is, so.
Since they removed it.
Mm-hmm.
And I would second that.
Motion and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion back.
And thank you for allowing me to communicate and explain here, I appreciate it. Are you guys planning on raising the landfill assessment because like your time is like almost out?
Yeah.
Because June thirtieth is the axe for me. Lacy and I have to be married some few days after that, but June thirtieth, there will be no, there will be nothing I can do.
If there's something on the books, then you can, you can roll it forward, right?
If you want it on her tax bills.
It takes a lot of time to add those.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if uh they read something on June seventeenth the next meeting.
I would say that you risk the chance of possibly missing that party because of landfillous water assessments, I mean, the things that we have, I don't wanna get into it because it will sound like I'm whining, but if you'd like to look at the list of what's needs to be done before I can walk over and say to Lacy, okay, I'm done, or can I have one more day, please, it's expensive.
So what is the deadline that you're talking about? I mean, what, give me a date. So do we need to have a special meeting and talk about this?
Is this something you want on the upcoming tax bills?
I do, I do, because we need to have it, and then we need to look at Grass Valley as well.
Or you have to have time to put it on the test.
Yeah.
It's so you don't. Just like a binding, okay, if you would like to come watch how, what we have to go through, it's not, it's not really easy.
I, I don't doubt that, I mean, nothing is, seems easy in this world anymore.
Then we have thousands of improved parcels. And when you say Grass Valley, are you considering changing the landfill assessments locally per there, or will they just all go up a certain amount, county-wide?
Well, I'd like to see county-wide everything go up, but Grass Valley might be a little bit more because of their transfer. This is a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, so now you're talking a special ad hoc query to pull those out, and you're, you're expecting me, which it's my job to ask our debt software company to help with that when they've got all these other counties that built and helping close the road.
So it might be easier this time around if we just, we just increase it for everybody blanket and then spend some time looking at for next fiscal year, maybe the different ones with transfer sites.
Yeah, I mean, you're, if you're asking for like the Grass Valley improved parcels to be pulled out, I'm going to be having to contact the vendor to get it.
Yeah.
Um, a special query to have them abstracted, cause right now everybody's in, I can do them en masse because everybody is a flat one-twenty, so it, yeah, so this is not, this is not at this time of year, good timing.
Right, right, so maybe it's best that we just do a flat rate for everybody at this round and then start looking at the others. And I, that's a decision that has to be made, but I mean.
It'd be nice to probably do it all at once if we can.
Yeah, but if, we've gotta take into consideration.
And then I could work with the vendor about extracting um whatever areas you're choosing for a further increase and, you know, start getting those processed for next fiscal year.
Um, so.
It's not that I don't want to see this happen, I think our landfill's really cheap as a taxpayer, it's incredibly inexpensive, and I even have a city pickup, but it's wonderful.
So maybe the board could talk about hosting a special meeting this afternoon and post it and then be on next.
Whatever date.
Tuesday.
Or sixteen. And Bryce, even the sixteen, I will go talk to um my definite trainer right now, if it's just a flat rate for everyone and see if we can do it in mass, so that would cut it to the twenty-third is what she'll be out to help me to ask the complications of a flat rate. Um, I mean, that might be doable.
On July sixth to.
She said you bumped our date up, so that, that's fine, I'm glad, cause I like.
So the first reading could be done on the seventh. And then it could be advertised on the tenth. Lacy, you think? Then it runs.
No. Paper comes out on the ninth, so it wouldn't be in the paper till the sixteenth, and it has to be ten days before the next meeting.
So we, it would be, it would go into a fat on the thirty. That's when it would pass.
So on the thirtieth, um and, and we have a little gray area, Lacy and I live by, but that is when your tax rule assessors. Is, that's it, the party's over, if you're an assessor, there should be no other changes after that date. So this should have like maybe happened, not, should have, could have. I, I, I would like to help with it, but it's really, it's really bad timing, I, I really.
So the issue is just how do we get this done in a time limit?
So if I understand you correctly, you're saying that if the board of county commissioners decide that they're not going to raise an assessment um by June thirtieth of the fiscal year, your reading of the law is that they can't raise it at all?
No, I'm saying, you can do any. You can do anything you all want as a board, I have statutes to meet as far as closing the tax rule.
I know.
To include if you're.
They're also billed quarterly.
But they get one bill.
And allows to be allowed to take quarterly, they get one bill and you're allowed to take quarterly if you're.
Sure, not billed quarterly, there, I, I do not do special bills for.
Yeah, so it would say one-twenty and that's what people would expect to get.
Yes, or if you were to choose to raise it to one-eighty or twenty, whatever you're looking at, so there, there's just a lot of criteria that goes into it.
Okay.
Um, so if it, if it were approved by the sixteenth, that would be perfect, but I don't know all the other applications that go into the paper and such things.
If it was approved by the twenty-third?
That I could probably do that by talking, going over and talking to Roxanne right now.
Would deadlines as far as paper and everything work?
Cause it would be in the paper on the sixteenth and it has to be ten days before the publication.
So why wouldn't it, why couldn't we get it?
Cause it's three days, it's ten days from the sixteen.
No, but why couldn't we get it in the paper on the ninth?
Well, if you don't have a meeting to do it.
We have it on the seven.
If we have the meeting on the seventh. Oh, because.
I have to send it to the paper today, yeah.
Sometimes though, sometimes they make, they're good about putting things in.
They have been for me as well, they've pushed stuff in for me.
Yeah.
We can give them all the wording.
Notice like that.
We could give them all the wording with the exception of the amount.
But to get it in the paper, it has to be seven.
I'm, I'm just.
Well, then this afternoon, I'll give Lacy the language, so it'll be in the paper and then she can notify them and I'll get with Karen and host a meeting on the seven.
On the seventh.
And if, and my understanding would be it would just be a flat rate so I could do it en masse this year and then maybe next year you'll extract areas that are concerned.
We'd have to do that.
I think that would be easier to flat rate this year and then look at it and start the process.
I don't, I don't think that the vendor is available to abstract for me, it is.
Yeah, it's.
She has four counties that she's helping push assessors that she needs to get complete by June thirtieth, approve the special assessment for those districts before, within the next six months, that would be.
That would be great, she, that then I could start working on them for the, for the twenty-two, twenty-three capture.
So like.
So what time would we like to have a meeting on the seventh?
We don't have three days to post a meeting.
Oh, sorry, it'd have to be the eighth, yeah, has to be the eighth, yeah. At what time?
I am only here the first half of the day.
Yeah, so let's do it.
You have what?
Early, uh, so eight.
I'm not available in the afternoon on Tuesday.
On you, so, but you, the morning's okay.
Eight would be good because that's before my first.
Okay, let's do eight, eight o'clock, would that be all right? Yes.
And please just keep me informed when you decide what you're doing with Grass Valley, so I could get a jumpstart on it for the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Yeah.
The sooner the.
Let's do it six months early.
Because we, when we reopen, when we open that role, I can change that immediately and not be up against the wall like this. And I will go let um the definite trainer know.
And thank you for mentioning that.
Well, it's been on my mind and I was fearful that um
Yeah.
I might miss the party if you guys didn't get it before the thirtieth, so thank you.
Thank you, Bernard.
James.
Hi, sorry.
No worries. This is also my, our team, we have four pages of uh business licenses we took in. Actually, we had a, we had pretty good month. People have been pretty good about.
Yeah, I was gonna say, issue here.
There's even been some burning man that, that have paid theirs. We will, we will have a planning commission meeting tonight, spare our free things on the, on the agenda. For the parcel map. Division in the large parcel map and in a and just for clarification, are we, are, are we now under, under the twenty-eighteen code, so I could tell Mark that? Yes, that we're gonna, okay, yes. So they're not, they're not gonna, she's not affected for two weeks. Oh, okay, yeah, so two weeks, okay. So, yeah, with the, with the amount of business licenses that we've had coming in, I've, I've, I've done thirty in a day, it's.
Thirty in a day?
Yeah, that, that, and then the next day you get.
We need to have a revolving door there instead of.
Well, actually, most of them come by mail, but you just, you, you just get mass mailing, it's, it's a lot of process. But it's going, going pretty good.
I'll get mine in.
Um, I just did our red meters yesterday and I took the water sample in Reno. And that's, everything else is okay on that end.
So now we're down to the biggie, number E.
Yes. I don't know if there's anybody on, if Penny is on by Zoom or not, but, or actually, did you guys have any questions to me on the reporter? If Penny, I don't know, she, I don't, I don't know if she's gonna be here on, on Zoom, I sent her everything and all the.
Pulse her, yeah.
To participate, she sent, you guys should have this last letter from the Division of Water Resources um that she emailed this morning.
So what does that say, that letter?
Um, it's a.
Cause we just got it.
It's from the Division of Water Resources and it's, it's basically saying that she has uh that there are water rights on this particular parcel of two acre feet a year for each parcel created.
So I have a question, the, the, the property that she's talking about is forty acres just over and she wants to split it into twenty and twenty, you know?
Yeah, into two trunks.
And then the ones around her, are those all twenties? They look like it.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're all left twice.
Do we know why hers wasn't a twenty initially?
Um, to, to begin with, I.
Never requested.
Yeah, I don't know why, why it was never, never broken down into twenty.
And I read the concerns that the planning commission had in their comments. Um, but I, and I know water's an issue, but I don't see how we can keep someone from dividing their property like that when everybody else around them is.
I don't either.
Yes.
I agree.
I, I, I'm not the, the planning commissioners, um, they put a lot of thought and, 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 and to their decision and, and I appreciate that, and them going through each.
Just by reading through it, you can tell they do a lot.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they did, they gave it a lot of thought and consideration and um and the one thing I, on this one is just literally just a couple hundred feet north um on the parcel above this one, I, I issued a um a permit for an home, I mean, I, so I'm, it's and there's one just up the street from that, so I, I get their concern, but I, I don't, I mean, I'm not it's, that's their, their decision and they're the people that to make that decision.
So does she have a is she planning on putting a well on both these twenty-eighth or parcels?
She has the right to do it.
And, and, yeah, she would have the right to. Because, well, well, and actually, in, in, in theory, every, every parcel is entitled to one domestic, one domestic. But it's up to the state engineer whether he issues that.
That's correct.
Issues that permit, depending on what, what, what basin it is.
Yeah, and that basin's over for.
And the problem we have with, with the basin in one, or in Grass Valley is that that basin is in two counties.
Yeah.
So not only does it affect Persian County, it also affects Humboldt County.
So I, I know where Herschel Road is, how far down is this, is it closer to the Humboldt side, is it on way down?
No, it's, it's, it's on, it's on, actually, have you been, have you been over Dunn Glen?
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's a little right there at the turnoff of Dunn Glen on the left.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Quite a way, yeah, Humboldt isn't really even close.
Yeah, this, this one is on the opposite side of the valley of, of the Sonomas.
Ah, okay. Hmm. I was totally in the wrong spot. Okay, but anyway, I I don't see how I understand the planning commission's concerns, but if everybody else is twenty acres, she should have the same right to do that.
Yeah.
And I will make a motion to that effect to overturn the decision and to allow her to split the two parcels.
I'll second.
The motion and a second.
Um, so, I, I, I'm sorry, um with, and Bryce, with this motion, um, is it, is this approving parcel map, so I can call it up?
Yes.
Yep. So, I'm in favor.
Okay, we have motion and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion back.
Anyway, if, if the planning commission has, I mean, I understand, and I'm really glad that they really discussed it and everything.
No, I mean, this one was, I mean, and, and that's that, that's what they should be doing, I mean, I. No, I mean, this was, I mean, and, and that's that, that's what they should be doing. I mean, I, I, I totally get it.
See, I don't understand why, and there's, he's also a forty acre parcel, but it's not divided, but everything else around that.
Yeah.
It's a twenty acre parcel.
I think their concern was that they were a little late to the game. There's a concern about the water level at that basin being. Appropriated already and just swamped with messy wells.
Sure.
And they, I think, and, and which is, which is very true, and they don't want it to turn into a peremptive situation where, I mean, granted, everybody knows that Grass Valley is a way over appropriated basin anyway. And, and like I said, I think their decision was, they don't wanna add more to the, another basin.
Yes, if it's to that point, maybe we should talk about a moratorium.
Yeah, and that was, that was brought up to you by Commissioner Plinger, and because there hasn't been a study to support a moratorium. Because you can't just impose a moratorium.
Can we not get that from the Humboldt River Water Basin Authority or anything like that?
That's something that would have to, have to occur before a moratorium could be instituted.
Then I will contact Jeff on tape and see if, if I can get some.
But in light of the fact that a moratorium has been discussed and there was this concern out there. Uh, that's why the planning commission did what they did, and they were very, very deliberate and very analytical on the process, and I thought they did a really good job.
I think.
That's not to say that, that this board's decision is not appropriate or correct, but I think that, um, there's, there's concern among the planning commission that this board always overturns them.
Oh.
So.
That's the first time.
And I'm just.
Yeah, I don't think that's true at all.
Well, I'm not saying it's true. I'm just saying that that's what the perception is, so, and it doesn't need to be discussed, but perhaps this board can reach out to some of those members and just talk to them.
I'm new on this board, but past practices, and especially with most of these parcels being twenty acre parcels, how do you deny that one person? And every other parcel around them is a twenty acre.
I'm not, Sheila, I'm not saying it's the wrong decision or not appropriate.
My concern is the water.
Right, and that's why this board, that's why the planning commission made the decision that, that they did, and the way that they denied is their spine is after they made it, they said. We don't think there's enough water. We don't think there's enough coverage out there. So that's how you, that's how the planning commission could deny a forty acre parcel for being subdivided.
But she does have the water right.
Even if, well, she has water rights for one.
One.
Right, not two, one, and that's how they deny it.
But.
By splitting it, she'll have water rights as well.
Correct.
But then we need to move forward with some research and something about that basin being over appropriated so we can.
But, but that's, but like I said before, that basin is also, I mean, that's also in two different counties, so, I mean, if, if you guys move for something and Humboldt County doesn't like it.
But.
I mean, it's, it's their basin too, so.
But they also sit on the Humboldt River water.
Yes, I, I think there could be cooperation.
There would be cooperation there, so that's a discussion that we probably need to have.
Right.
At our next moratorium meeting.
Anything else?
Uh, I don't think so, unless you guys have anything else.
Do you have to get back to track and fielding?
I do. The humidity on field is getting bad.
Did you wear your sunscreen?
Yeah, my hundred SPF.
Uh, yeah.
Ghost. Yeah, so sorry for my wild hair and tired.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. And your Boston Red Sox hat.
Of course.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay.
Thanks, James.
Keep going back up to F, Jerry Allen. I did get a note from him and he's busy, couldn't be here. Number six, there's nothing to report. Number ten, proclamation and awards. Don't say anything. Do the steel, uh, have nothing to report. Who we Lacy?
No.
Lacy and I are working on it on a thing and.
On a thing?
On a thing, so, with, at this point, there's nothing to report.
I did submit reimbursement with the twenty thousand dollar care spending for the field system repairs. My first reimbursement request was picked back to me.
Was?
Yes, so I resubmitted it with more documentation.
Oh.
And I haven't heard yet.
And that was like the three thousand dollars or something.
Thirty-two hundred or something.
Yeah.
Lacy, you're gonna have another one too, because John sent me a field yesterday, it's like three, six hundred something. For that B and T sales, and then I thought the other one was only like eighteen hundred or something. The other one is for the current real that they, okay, so that one, it's not for the care spending. If, so the next time we have a eighteen, okay, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to number thirteen, care spending.
So we talked.
You had a meeting on that or you went to a meeting that you learned some more?
Not really.
I mean, we have a whole thing on.
Yeah, and it's nothing really more than that, other than August thirty-first, was it? We have to do something. Oh, yeah. We have August thirty-first, we need to submit our first interim report, and the way they were talking was it was supposedly a plan on how we were gonna spend it. But I don't read that when I read the document here, so that we're supposed to, NACO is supposed to put something together to help us with all of this. Information, but, um, we talked about the water tower in Emily. That's something that would come under this. Um, we'll need from James, you know, whatever the cost might be on that. We talked about the Rye Patch Firehouse expansion. That I think we can do, um, because.
The way I read it, we, we shouldn't be able to.
And if nothing else, a loss of revenue, but we have to go through a procedure for that.
We need range help on that issue.
Yeah, and then.
And I don't really know that we have a loss.
We haven't had it in that regard, no. We haven't, and so that's why I didn't, I don't think we can do it under that. But hopefully we can do it under the infrastructure and put it towards the COVID nineteen. Um, workforce development for Heidi, I think that's a great thing, and if we can put forth maybe twenty-five thousand for three years and get Humboldt to do this in the city. We could match her a thousand without a real problem.
I think we all got an email from Sean Burke.
Yeah, and I, I looked at that, that would take up all the money.
It takes up a billion dollars.
Yeah, I, I went, holy cow, cause we only get a million three for all that whole time, and the city, now the city is getting a lot. So they need to pick pony up to some of this too. Uh, maybe they could buy the ambulance for the EMS.
Yeah.
Seriously. And we, we need to put in, you know, if someone, if one of our employees or our employees get COVID, um, you know, the sick leave benefits and stuff for that, that can be covered. You know, under it as well, so there's things like that.
I think that needs to be really strict.
Yes, yes, it does, because. Yes. Yes.
Do you have any?
I think they need to have a doctor's note that they have the COVID.
Are, is there gonna be a committee formed to kind of oversee this? Or just gonna bring out the whole thing?
That's my next question.
Oh.
Okay, last time I did the cares act, I met with everybody and I did the stuff and I met with Reed and I did all that, so. You know, obviously, as a commission, we have to approve it, but who's going to take care of all the stuff? That we have to do. I mean, obviously, there's, Lacy's office is gonna have to request the funds when it's time to do it. Reed's office is gonna have to do all the reporting.
And I'm pretty sure, I haven't talked to Pam Hogg, but the existing care space is just being handled by the grant. And I'm assuming that's what she's gonna tell me on this. They have a grant specialist that I think will be my show. Fire.
And then there should be money put aside to help your office with extra work that's caused by this million three as well, so.
I don't, I mean, it looks, we can spend the money.
Oh, that's not a problem.
There's, uh, two other things that pop out when you, when you read through this. One is, uh, for water is, uh, the water line to the airport.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that just really jumps out.
And we, I don't know how much that would cost.
I have prices now.
Okay.
I have prices based on us doing S and the water district doing the work. Uh, another one that jumps out is, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen with the CDVG.
No.
For the senior center.
And there's demolition improvements.
It's, the senior center jumps out here too.
Yeah. Now with CDVG, if that's approved for the thirty-nine thousand, we cannot use these funds to make the difference.
Okay, no, no, I'm just saying, if that were denied for whatever.
We could do the whole thing.
Then we, we have a fall back.
Yeah.
I don't know how long it takes for them to approve or deny them. Anyway, there's lots of projects. To be considered.
So Reed, do you think there should be a committee and broadband? Yeah, well, the broadband, the AT&T that we just approved can come out of here at forty-seven thousand.
Right.
And it should, because we don't have the money elsewhere.
Exactly, and, and that's something this whole valley needs.
Yeah. Now, they did say when I listened in on a national NACO meeting, that they feel strongly that there's more broadband coming. But that doesn't keep us from using it for what we've already approved, the forty-seventh, and we'll see what else, but one point three million is not gonna go very far.
No, not when you're talking projects like we have.
Yeah, and the city needs to pitch in too.
Yeah.
Cause I don't remember, recall what they're getting, but they're getting, I think, more than we are. I thought they were getting. One point six or something, anyway.
The city is.
It was.
That was higher than ours.
It's higher than ours.
Wow.
Yeah. And so they need to pitch in.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Yeah, really, but anyway. So Reed, do you think there should be a committee, or do you think that, what do you, what would you recommend that would be easier?
Well, you have all these suggestions. I mean, who's gonna say yes, no?
Well, the, the commission will. We'll put them all in a list and we'll go through them and.
And it'll have to be by so much money or whatever it is, well, I just don't wanna give you the. Processing payment when we shouldn't have processed.
Yeah, no, we'll do like we did before. We'll have a list of what's approved, and anything else that comes up would have to be approved individually.
So we need to work on a list and then prioritize.
Prioritize, yes.
And I'm pretty sure it'll have to be like the Southern Care Act, which was a learning tool for me. We were allowed to, um, capture all law enforcement, which is public safety, right off the bat, that's how we got our money so early. I wasn't aware that the general ledger had to follow that exactly at first, so there's augmentations that I'm gonna have to do. For all the rest of the careers money that was spent and can already used by law enforcement.
But this one, it'll have to be right up front done properly.
That's my concern, is I don't wanna go through the paperwork night of the year.
Yeah, the other thing is depending on what the committee says for EMS, we, we probably could justify. An EMS salary or stipend or something if that's, you know, out of this as well. I mean, there's.
That's an ongoing thing, but we don't have money to cover in our budget. That's, that's a concern there.
Yeah, then you're hitting it with a one-time shot.
Yeah, it's the one-time.
Right.
Your salary, but then we're on the hook for the following years, which we don't have revenue for right now.
But anyway, so that's what we did last time as far as we did one-time things, you know, that wouldn't be ongoing or repetitive. But we can do that, and if you get your figures for your water line for the airport, and then we can make up the list.
Yeah.
And I can start the list.
What about, other than the broadband in Emily, I'm sure that, that's, needs some attention. Especially when they know the field kind of want that, their water system.
Yeah, but that's where I have to get, we have to get numbers from James, but what I'm saying is we are, all these things that we're talking about, put them in list.
That's what we needed to do. And then prioritize.
Yeah. And look at how much. I mean, we may end up spending for three things, the whole amount of money. You know, and if we went with Sean's stuff, which I know we need some of this, it would be the whole.
And maybe, maybe we should look at a brush truck for Grass Valley instead of all this other.
Well, I thought we bought a new brush truck for them.
We got a new brush truck for Rye Patch.
Rye Patch.
And that was donated.
Yes, since Grass Valley is still broken, maybe we should do this instead of.
Well, at least it's fixable. It's just, it sounds like it's taking time to get part.
Oh, it's like your fuel truck.
It's.
Yeah, make them that year, right?
Yeah. Okay.
We're gonna have a special meeting on the eighth.
At a point in time.
Yeah, so do you want me to do the list, start the list, and like I did before, and do you wanna discuss it on the eighth, a little bit more?
Yes.
I mean, at least start with a list. I'm not saying approve it all, but at least.
But at least a starting point, and then we can add or delete on the eighth. Okay. That works for me. As long as we get it on there, on the, on the meeting for the eighth agenda, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, number fourteen, board appointments, resignations. I don't think we have any. I know one's coming, but it's not here yet.
We have appointments for the volunteer advisory board, uh, who is it? Penny Higby wants to be reappointed and.
Grass Valley.
Grass Valley, where?
Did Grass Valley get on here?
Linda Workman for Grass Valley.
Oh, well, we have another one, the resignation coming, but I don't think it's not here yet.
And then Lowell Henderson, did he get? Okay, so and Lowell. Okay, Lowell Henderson would like to be appointed to the recycling committee, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to do all three of those reappointments, appointments, second. And Lowell Henderson. And two are reappointed, and one is the first time.
That's a second.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion and a second, all those in favor? I. Al Swanson, attorney at law, request for a ruler to renew the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two conflict attorney contract in the amount of. Either. Well. An amount of fifty-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, which is the previous year's pay, or fifty-five thousand one hundred and forty, which would constitute the cost of the million.
Right. I, I got a letter from Kyle's office this morning that I read, and he's just requesting that the contract be renewed in the amount that it was last year, so fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. And then I'm sure he'll try to increase that next year. There was one error, so the initial draft of the contract that I sent to you included the date, June thirty-first, which doesn't exist. So I sent a different draft. Uh, for the effective, effective date of the contract to be July first, two thousand twenty-one, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, so. You should have that. If you don't, I apologize. I'll run up a friend that doesn't want it.
Oh, you emailed it down, so I.
Okay, so anyway. It could be signed.
Did you say fifty-three thousand eight hundred?
Yes.
What, not five eighty?
Five thousand three hundred, fifty-three hundred, five thousand eighty? Fifty, fifty-three thousand five hundred and eighty.
Well, that's what I showed, but Bryce just said something different.
Yeah, fifty-three, five eighty.
Okay, so that is correct. Okay.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the. Contract, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two conflict attorney contract in the amount of fifty-three thousand five eighty.
And I will second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion. Number sixteen, assignment of lease agreement with Nile Valley Raceway to Silver State Racing. With the Nile Valley Raceway in consideration for Silver State Racing. Maintenance and continued operation of. I am.
You can pull up another chair and have a seat here. You need to introduce yourselves for the.
Crystal Star.
I was came here with. These folks, okay, number one, you know, we. And getting too young to do. That. Otherwise. This is gonna be not. Just like the other. And I came to sign a lease. And it was never signed. And fill out some papers and they were correct, but anyhow. They've got many, many years of experience. And how long about there? I've been in this since the sixties. And I think. That sorry, gentlemen. And they have a copy of the suggested lease agreement. And there are a couple. Couple of things up here. Be work. One of them is, okay. You have a lease now from year to year. Way I understood it originally, we had a one uh, a lease forever.
Yeah, so it was a thirty five year lease.
Okay.
That Nile Valley had with the county, and that was entered a long, long time ago.
Okay.
You said thirteen years, but it was actually like two thousand six, and I think it was renewed thirteen years ago, but regardless.
This one here just gives.
Yeah, this one, this one would be a one year lease term, and the reason for that is. New landlords wanna see if they're, if they like their tenants. And new tenants wanna see if they like their landlords. It's not limiting to, it's not limiting. Or precluding the county entering into a newly lease agreement for. For them entering into a new lease agreement with the county. But it's just for one year, and then the parties can evaluate whether things are working and that. They don't like it.
That gives them an album.
Yeah.
The way that dates are. This year is gonna end November.
For the for this racing season.
November, and the way the lease dates, it ends in June or July, she's right in the middle of the race.
Oh.
So to 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 schedule races for the whole thing and have something happen June.
My thinking is public. You know, they're like, wait a minute, you know, if it's gonna end mid of the season, why should I even do it? Sure. So. You know, say that if we could, you know, I agree with him a hundred percent. You guys wanna know that we're who we'd say we are, and we wanna know that we have a family to to call on when we need them, you know, I get that part. So I would just like to say that, you know, we can start the lease, you know, in June, but take it till November of.
November.
So we'll be.
That way it's in the off season.
Yeah, races.
And you all then you have the opportunity to renew. And so when we put it on Facebook and media, that the people out there see that we're protecting. Their vested interest as well as ours. That's, and the other thing would be the uh. No alcohol because track.
Well, I was gonna bring in the.
So June second, or June second, two thousand twenty one to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty two.
Yes, okay. See the sanction season. Okay, that's nothing I wanna bring up. This track is sanctioned. By a.
A racing association.
And it runs through December third.
Yeah, so. Yeah, it should probably should be December thirty first.
Yeah, that's what I was. And uh, it's, and I I looked at the rest of stuff. Looks good to me. One, there's two things that. Won't work for them. And that is your. The alcohol. We have sold alcohol since the beginning of the racetrack. And we are okay with that through the Madison State Health Department. And these folks do have their, their license and their permits.
So it says no alcohol unless you get a liquor license.
Oh, yeah, okay, I didn't, I didn't see where it said.
Yeah, well, they have a liquor license.
So this should be a problem.
Okay, okay.
And one thing is not on there, it's not clear, and really not clear to me. Okay, everything that's out at the racetrack. Belongs to Nile Valley Raceway. Except. The stuff in the ground, isn't that correct? Like the concrete and the buildings that are erected on the property that cannot actually physically be.
Impermanent structures.
That belongs to the county, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Even though the rec ward, we went to the rec ward, see them getting that.
Yeah.
The rec board is an advisory board to the county commissioners.
Okay, because they're the ones that. Uh, funded us the monies. But now everything on top of the ground that we bought ourselves is removable, isn't that correct? Personally owns. Two other things I have to question. So what would, what would Nile Valley want to move because it's theirs? Well, if they go. If they don't wanna continue the lease, and I don't wanna do it, if we can't get anybody else, that's the only thing.
Gotcha, okay.
They hate when it's stuff.
So with them uh proposing to take over, there's nothing Nile Valley is gonna take away. No, no, we're, we're, we're making a agreement right now between us.
Yeah.
That'll be written in another place.
Okay.
Copy. You know, this is a new venture for them, and a couple of us are gonna help them. Make this transition because this is new to them. Lot of things they don't.
Oh, yeah.
No. Uh, one thing that was brought up here too is the insurance. We can't operate without insurance, period. Even if. We were out there, could you have such rich capital? We have all. Uh, we have inspections by the insurance company. They come out yearly. They check for signs. Say everything's safe. We have our safety fire truck. For saying. But there's two pieces of equipment that we have out there that were donated to Nile Valley Raceway. We have no titles for them. One is the belly dump that was given to us by the county.
Right.
And the other one is a Peterville fire truck that was donated to us from Ryback. And we have no titles. We, we actually had a discussion on the the belly dump not very long ago, and of course, nobody remembered it.
So I I've I've talked to a few different people about that. They come to the DA's office, we have a process that you can go through. To get what's called a writ of mandate from the district court, and basically that's just an order from a judge to the DMV. Tell him the DMV to issue a title. I I think that they've gone to the clerk's office, the titles aren't there, that's wrong, but I mean, you can try again. It's a pretty simple process of just.
Maybe, maybe you just look and see, do you have any, I, how old are these things?
Ancient. I think, I think the water truck's nineteen sixty nine, Peterville. And I do not know what year the belly dump is, it was for the road department.
So Lacy will look, if that's okay with you. Okay, she needs to know what she's looking for, so.
Bin numbers off of it.
With that, okay.
Yeah, that would be nice. Oh, that'd be nice if we get them.
No.
You guys came in and filed your petition.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, now I remember you. So what you need to do is get the bin numbers to Lacy. She'll look. If she doesn't have it, then you need to request from the DA. To do whatever this was that he just said.
Okay.
He at the court. The legalese.
Yeah.
But you get the court document.
And that's really easy. I just have my wife's card and. Do you have any questions on that stuff?
Uh, that was pretty much the ones that I had concerns on.
So the raceway will still be called the same, though. That's what I.
It's still be Love Lock Speedway, but instead of, instead of their Nile Valley, it'll be.
Right.
Silver State.
Okay. So you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the lease agreement uh from the Nile Valley Raceway to the Silver State Racing. And to change, or the contract dates would be from June second, twenty twenty one to December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
And then we just make a motion to redo it.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna think. We pay a hundred and twenty dollar a year. To the county, does that continue? You got that?
Yeah.
Once a year. That's all.
It would just go over just to.
That's a landfill fee.
Right.
For the trash.
No, it wasn't, it's not a property tax.
Well, no, but that we pay. Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
And a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion back.
So before, you know, at the end of your season, then just get with Bryce, and you know, if everything's good to go, we'll renew the contract.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Thank you, thank you for doing this.
My wife was like, honey, you're an hour early.
We've been outside.
That's okay. Have a safe trip back. Thank you.
Litigation meeting.
Yeah.
Our litigation meeting. We have an eleven o'clock timed event. A presentation and proposal from Star Two Star for new, for a new phone system for Bridgeton buildings. What can you tell us?
Hi, everybody. So I'm Glenn from FCC.
Hi, Glenn.
Star to Star dealer in town. And so if you guys are looking for a new phone system, this is a really good alternative for anything else out there. This is Jason from Star to Star.
Hello.
From Brian from Star to Star. He's the engineer. He's the sales representative for the area.
Yep.
So if you got any questions, start.
Awesome. Again, thank you guys for hosting us today. Jason Latrum, I've been with Star to Star now for about four years. I run our wholesale white label division from the Mississippi West. Recently this year, I kind of helped out through City Northwest, Northern California, Nevada. So I kind of jack of all many trades in Star to Star. Um, I am not new to the world at all. After the past four years, I've been in doing this for about twenty years total. Um, so my quick little introduction and then, uh, yeah, Brian.
Brian Simmons. I've been with Star to Star since January, but I've been in the industry for about thirty-five years. Across all different units of phone systems and voice and data. So I've been doing this a long time. Jumped on board with Star to Star because of their product. The fact that they have that claim disaster.
Perfect. So I have a quick PowerPoint here that you guys can see up here.
Yeah.
Okay. So stop. If you guys have any questions, I'm, I got six slides, five slides. I'm going to run through, take maybe five minutes. I hate kind of showing stuff I don't want to talk about and kind of what you guys are thinking about. You know, we've had a kind of an initial discovery with John of the different locations and internet, you know, some the positives, benefits, negatives, and how we can kind of help every site with disaster recovery as well, clarity on the systems, what we need to do with each one. So Star to Star, um, we just merged with Saint Goma, uh, a few months ago. We now took over the fifth largest telecommunications company in the world. We have a hundred and ten locations worldwide. We have over probably two point three, two point four million endpoint customers, which is enterprise, meaning businesses. We don't do residential. We don't do the one-two phone type solutions. So we are a hundred percent channel based, such as, um, through FCC right here who resell us. And we have a relationship that we're kind of a huge team together. So in all, as you see here, we have over six hundred employees worldwide, hundred and ten, uh, locations worldwide here. Revenue, EBITDA positive, um, we actually grew over about forty, thirty-four to forty percent through last year. Um, everybody who has the on-prem devices through the PSTN analog systems that moved to host it, where we could give you the voice, video, SMS texting, collaboration suite, anywhere in the world. So instead of being in office, if you had to work from home, mobile, that's where we stepped in. So we had honestly probably one of our biggest years ever through the pandemic. And as everybody's realizing that having that option to take what you have on site to move it around with ease is pretty much where everybody's going to today. So in our solution that you're going to be able to move it at any time without calling an IT guy to come in. If you want your phone moved, you take it from your office, plug it into your house, it works just fine, just like that. So extensions, dial tones, everything that stayed the same, um, make it very easy for everybody. Kind of a plug and play when it's all said and done for you guys. What else do I want to touch on here? Uh, not much. Uh, any questions about kind of the, we've been in business for about fourteen years. Uh, we have eight pops. I'm going to show you here. I'm going to be a little more technical on the next slide. But any questions on Star to Star, financial, revenue, employees? Anybody have any questions? That is easy. So.
Who was the one you just took over to make it, uh, so big now?
So Saint Goma. So Saint Goma, so Saint Goma merged certain, they bought Star to Star pretty much, okay? And we still have started to start a name. Saint Goma is more the international presence. So we have the on-premise, we have a hybrid, we also have a cloudless version. So there's not really another company out there, Cisco, MyTelZavaya, anybody that can do all three or four solutions that we can. So that's, that's the I, I mean, I can't even tell you the possibilities that you have now with the solutions that we do have. So, um, Saint Goma's been around now, uh, what, since eighty-four, about thirty, thirty years or so. Yeah, we're fourteen, fifteen years D in the game.
So how do you spell that?
Saint Goma, S-A-N-G-O-M-A.
Oh, I.
If you look right up here.
Well, I was looking, oh, there. Sorry.
Yep, no, you're okay.
Sorry. Well, it is, but I spelled it right. Maybe it was just subconsciously I saw it there. I don't know.
Yep. So let's jump down here. So this is a point of presence, okay? When we talk about, let's say, POPs, P-O-P-S, that's our data centers. Okay, that's where we keep, that's our cloud servers, okay? So instead of having a big box on site, all the brains that here, well, something ever happens that you're pretty much dead in the water, okay? So we have hundreds of million dollars in each one of these cities here for kind of buckets. They're all active, active dynamic, which means whatever happens in one happens at another. So if one fails, it backs up parallel at point B, C, D, E, F, G, okay? So to give you a perfect example, when Hurricane Sandy came in, was it four years ago, five, up in the north, northeast? It actually wiped out McLean, Virginia. The entire thing went underwater. So our data center went down. Verizon, ATT, everybody was down. Nobody could call, talk. Everything that was in McLean went over to Chicago. We shut New York down too, because we didn't know if New York was next. So the worst thing that happened to any of our customers, if they're on the phone, they physically lost a dial tone, they just hung up, recalled, that was it. We were the one telecommunications person that, uh, did not go down that day. So we, knock on wood, we haven't had a full outage in less than eight, nine years. And behind that, in our SLAs, we give you a five-nine guarantee, which means no less or no more than five minutes, an entire year, you'd have downtime with us from a phone system.
Are you looking at putting another one in the Midwest or anything?
As of right now, also, we do. We do have one in Alaska that's further up. We don't show it there. Um, I know Florida's on the map. Uh, that's our, one of our HQs down there. I don't know if we have, because we have Chicago, we got Texas. I don't know if we're looking at.
Atlanta. I haven't seen any plans for.
Yeah.
The Midwest right now.
And again, that could change like six, seven months. Yeah.
Could end up.
Yep.
And chances are, I would guess it'd be around Denver.
Yeah. Any questions on, again, this is just talking about the points of presence, the redundancy that we have built in on our backbone. So that's where SLAs kick in, our guaranteed uptime kicks in because of how we build the network. So that you guys will never have to remember any of this because phone's going to work. You don't have to worry about it. We can draw all the backend, don't have to.
Pick it up, down, works.
You what?
Pick it up, dial it out.
Dial it out. Yep, that's right. Uh, I'm going to skip over the next one. This is just same thing, but internationally, points of presence. That will not affect you guys at all. That's more Saint Goma. Not going to worry about that. From a support standpoint, again, locally, you have FCC, okay? You have Glenn, you have this team, you have the engineers here. But you also have Star to Star twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Okay, as you see where we come on site, we fly all over the world. There's me, there's probably what, forty of me, there's another hundred. Technical guys out across North America. Um, so at any given time, you have point A, we're point B, twenty-four, seven, Knox, Atlanta and Sarasota, Florida. Um, but you have a team behind you guys. So Glenn has a team of, on my side, that it's a direct relationship. So instead of calling the support, you can call me, you can call the engineers, or you guys can call us directly as well. So if Glenn doesn't answer somebody, I will. I, I, I've never called him and he never answers. Yep. So, but again, um, this kind of gets a little technical. Our time to answer is less than two minutes. Talk time is less than fifteen for any escalations. Uh, we're six thousand calls a month. We have support just in North America alone, over almost a million endpoints. I think that's outdated. I think it's about one point two now. And again, this is from email, phone, chat, live, if, you know, SMS, however you guys want to communicate, we can support it all for you guys. Um, that's ranging from level one through four support. So I know Glenn does the one and two, maybe not two so much, but if you ever need extra help, he comes straight to us and we get it solved ASAP. If there's anyone who's going to. Yep.
That's one thing.
Yep. That's nice. You don't have, ever have to have something on site again. So we can remote log in, anything that we have here, we can fix it. Everything's pure portal. So from an IT perspective, you can be on your cell phone, you need to rearrange a lot of attendance, call distribution, routing, calls, whatever, you can do it all from the click of the phone. So it's a, it's a web-based portal that the admin signs into, can fix anything at any time. Now, this is where it kind of gets fun. This is, uh, this is why Star to Star is known for our disaster recovery, business continuity, and this is our uptime. So let's start real quick. Going from PSTN, Citrix model, you'll never have a, a busy signal ever hit with this. It's not about lines, it's about data, it's about space. And our space is unlimited in our cloud. So you could have somebody on the phone, you could have four hundred people call you, and then you could answer them, you could have music on hold. Um, you can put them to an auto attendant, but nobody will ever have a busy signal ever again. And you can always tell who's next in line from a physical parent's phone, from your cell phone, from a soft client on your computer too. And again, we train you guys, so we'll show you how to use all that. But, uh, we've talked a lot about the five nines on the uptime. We guarantee this. Okay, that's less than five minutes per year. You won't find that trip of that five nines from anybody else. Everybody else is three or four. Okay, we do that because the power backend is built in the appliance that we put on site for you guys. Okay, so that, that's big. If you guys, schools, fire, nine-one-one emerges, anything that is a mandatory must answer, you throw that on there with four G backup. So if the internet ever goes down, we can take your hard physical phones over four G like a cell phone. So if I'm calling to check into my student or my child, I never, I never get a business signal. And it's always, it can always be answered. I'm calling nine-one-one. Today, if the internet goes down, you lose it. Where's your backup? With us, I can take it up over four G and you're never down, ever. If you have four G down, you got internet down, there's probably a bigger issue, you know, so. Cloud access for phone numbers features. Again, this is all a hundred percent web-based. If you guys need to add a feature, you need to add a phone number into the phone user, it's just a simple address we throw in the back. We mail out the phone, you plug it in and you're good to go. You need extra phone numbers, a toll-free number, marketing advertising numbers, you tell us what county, what prefix, and the age you want on there, we can get it within probably a couple of seconds, to be honest, for you. Um, built-in business continuity for local survivability. That is our Starbucks, okay? The nice thing about that, our Starbucks is, think of a big old phone system, a big PBX consolidated down to the size of this. So local survivability, if that internet ever fails, I can still extension section dial without dial tone, without internet. I can still page. Um, and then you add four G on top of that, I can still make in and outgoing calls without even having internet or dial tone access coming from the building. So we pretty much guarantee you're never down unless you have a full-on power outage, which that's a different discussion, but we can still do that. Yep, we can still bring you guys back up within five, ten minutes, depending on the generator you guys have, and we could act, access all the phones that way too. Let's see, I don't think we have to go into D R S, we're not going to be doing any configuration. Uh, internet outage is, any questions on disaster recovery, uptime, Q O S, quality of service? I haven't really got into Starbucks yet, what it really does, but it prioritizes voice over data. So what we do with that appliance box, it knows how much per call, how much data per call it requires. So it's going to yank the data from Facebook, you know, YouTube, whatever that extra data is being used for. Email is going to grab it, bring it over, and it's going to guarantee the voice follow. Okay, that's why we can guarantee our voice over any other provider out there today because of that device. Any questions on that and how that works? Now, we're kind of going fast over it, but you know, it's kind of a, a learn, it's, you know, you learn it one day, forget. As long as it works, it works. So I don't want to go too, too detailed with it. That's his job. I like this because this kind of shows the entire collaboration suite. And with that, what I mean here is our suite of products, okay? This is our competitors out there. The Cisco's, eight-by-eights, Ring Centrals, everybody. We can do, we own the backbone. Okay, this is not a third-party product. This is ours. We design it, it's our licensing, it's everything. The only two things that are not ours is our Big Leaf, our SD-WAN, which we have a partnership with Big Leaf. And then our, we are also desktop as a service with Citrix. We're the only UCaaS company in the world who can put all this collaboration suite into Citrix and make it work today. I can do video, SMS texting, phone calls through a hosted desktop. So anything saved on your computer, I can log on through web browser. And now my desktop pulls up on my cell phone, my files, everything is backed up here as well. And I can make calls through that virtual desktop as though I'm sitting here on the computer. So huge and helpful, huge and legal. Um, attorneys use it every day. Instead of bringing a laptop, if something breaks here, battery dies, they can log on, access any file that they ever need through their debt, virtual desktop on their cell phone. But there's a lot of other advantages to that too. So again, contact center voice, that's what UCaaS is, our voice product. SD-WAN, which is taking multiple internet connections down to one IP address. So if one fails, you guys don't ever see downtime. Okay, that's a network question, you know, from a financial, if you guys want to get to that, unless you guys were, Glenn on that and everything else. Um, CPaaS is more integration. We don't need to really talk about that unless you guys want custom integration into CRMs, maybe some accounting tools you want to work with our voice products. Uh, we can do that. So from an A to Z solution, we can do really whatever you want. We can custom make, create, uh, you know, uh, something kind of, I know, schools do it all the time, you know, they have certain nine-one-one requirements. So if they hit nine-one-one, it sends a message to the principal, vice principal, the teacher, what desk you're, what room it was, you know? So if you want something custom like that, that's it. Where are we getting CPaaS and some other stuff in there too? So we have that functionality as well. Any questions on us kind of versus everybody else?
I can't think of one.
Okay, no worries. Uh, so I kind of want to skip this one. This is kind of going into, let me do this real quick. This is the last slide I had. I'm going to do something else real quick. I'm going to bring up a bundle. Okay, so I'm going to go through what you guys. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to make this a little bit easier. I'm going to show you this slide instead. So when you're looking at a hosted solution, okay, when you're talking about collaboration, you're talking about voice, these are the features that we're going to give you, okay? So make it easy. From a voice perspective, everybody's going to have dial tone. Everybody's going to have their own voicemail. Everybody's going to have voicemail to email. So if you have access to email on your phone, anybody leaves a voicemail, you get it on your cell phone, get it in your email on your laptops, desktops, however you guys do that today. Don't need really type of reception consoles. Um, find me, follow me. That's kind of a real neat feature. So we can actually connect you with multiple devices. So if somebody's trying to get ahold of you on one phone, they call your extension, I can have it ring up to nine different devices. So your cell phone can ring, your home phone can ring, your brother's cell phone can ring, whatever you have. So we can connect multiple devices trying to get to you if it's that important. But like mine, somebody calls my desk phone, my cell phone rings same time. If I don't answer it anywhere, it goes back to my desk phone voicemail, they get that, and I get a push from there. If I don't answer it anywhere, it goes back to my desk phone voicemail, they get that and I get a push from there. Um, another real nice feature too, you have SMS and uh, MMS messaging. So you have your own direct number. So if somebody wants to schedule a payment, you know, for courthouse or here, or whatever it is. Instead of calling, they, you have the access ability to text now. And that pops up on, you know, that's a receptionist job, whoever's that job is to set that. That pops up on the computer, pops up on the cell phone, and they can talk back and forth via text message that way as well. So instead of giving that cell phone number out, we can mask that. And now you have your own business line or the main number. So you got video, you got voice, you got SMS, really everything there is today is built into this for communication tools. Um, Team Hub, it is not out yet. This is our brand newest product. I'll let Brian get in this a little bit. But uh, I'm going to kind of skip that because it's an alpha. We still got probably a few more months until it gets out there. Everybody knows Zoom, so our video meetings is just like Zoom. Okay, we compete against them. There is no extra cost. It is already built in. There's no additional cost for that. And everybody gets it. So everybody has your own. Let's say Zoom credentials that you can hand out anytime and use that. It could be a teacher, it could be anybody in the county's office, fire chief, whatever it is. So. Um, I don't know if I need to go into that because we use that on the basis pretty much now today. But the cool thing about this is it's a parallel screen sharing too. That's something that's a lot of, or you're going to have a different license pay extra for. So I can share some, Brian can share some, Larry, Larry, correct? You can share something at the same time, so we're viewing three different screens at the same time. So that's kind of a real cool feature here as well. Um, I don't know if you guys still do faxing, but faxing is built in, electronic fax. So you can send, receive faxes from your email, from your portal, or from your cell phone. And same thing for the inbound. So and you can custom move that any way you want to.
Go ahead. It's a good feature, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we still run into people faxing today, you know. Uh, HIPAA requirements, some people have to have, you know, from health, they got to send it, and so you can do it that way too. Uh, package applications, kind of last one that's already embedded too. I don't know what kind of CRMs you guys have back in. Um, SAS, which is like software applications, we can integrate into that as well. If you want anything like to pop up, somebody calls you, has a history of their contact information. So we can do screen pops and integrated outlook, wherever you want there as well. Nice thing here is our employee alerts, okay? This, the biggest thing here is with healthcare and uh, schools, okay? Back in the day, you could say, I could shoot her. You know, you know, you can't really say that because it could be a knife, could be something else, right? So this is a predefined alert. So somebody breaks in that school, they're coming in. You get a three-digit code on that phone, it sends out alert to everybody on their SMS text, phone, and their email. Automatically throughout the whole company. So you can learn everybody by three, four digits on your, on your physical phone. It's pretty fine that you guys send out. Or you can change one day to say, hey, it's happy hour time. You know, I don't really care, but it's there, it's built in, it's there for you guys. Um, but again, schools and healthcare is the biggest thing. They have trauma patients, somebody got guns, they want you, or gunshot, they're coming in, they hit it, goes to four different doctors, they're ready on standby. Instead of trying to page out over the system. So it's, it has its benefits on that. Any questions on features that I didn't cover that you guys use today or questions about?
I mean, that system there, that's something we have. That's what you were saying. We have a alert since now, so it's.
So if you guys have that. So that's a little different. Yep, this is everybody under your umbrella. Yep, that actually has a physical device license phone. Um, so like in a school, every teacher, superintendent across the county, whoever's under that umbrella would be alerted to. Not the parents, you know, something like that, like you guys probably do today. Yeah. So.
We do have a product that will be coming out. It's called notification. It does exactly that.
Yep.
It goes outside of the system.
Oh, it does. And you'll get that automatically when it does get released. So it's already predefined in here. So if you guys pay for that today, that could take its place and maybe that's financial savings for you guys too.
Justin, have you figured out what your extension bill is? Actually, that's. So what's going to happen is we're going to replace eighteen T. That's what started.
Yep.
So basically, any published number, like you probably have, I don't know, this building probably have.
At least, yeah.
I think I saw like seven, like seven total numbers.
So here is the list of all of our tenants.
Yep.
Have ninety-two PTNs, like you said, most of these are.
Yep. And there's their costs associated to all those as well that would not be associated with us. So when I gave you the example, somebody calls and you have four hundred other people calling out. In your scenario, you could only have up to two or three people on that for that number. Depending how many lines you have on that with us, it could be up limited without the additional cost.
So this, this is an overview of what we are currently.
Throughout twenty-eight months for just.
For.
Yeah, for, for phone, about twenty-eight a month, yeah. So when you look at your long distance here, look, I mean, I don't, we don't, if you guys want to get into financials, we can. Um, but I don't know if you want to do that yet. So from a long distance standpoint, financially, that goes away. That is a zero fee for us anymore because every single one of our license comes with a thousand minutes. Okay, so if you have seventy-five phones times a thousand, you get seventy-five thousand a month. And it's cool. So it doesn't matter what phone calls it. So you'll never, that four eighty-eight disappears tomorrow. And then I'm, I know our cost already, so there's the, I mean, we're talking probably a thousand bucks savings a month. Out the gates with zero capital upfront too. We'll come in here, we'll install, we'll do training by group, by individual. Um, put all the new hardware in with zero out of pocket and just roll in your monthly with still about a thousand savings a month. And that's, we'll do site A, site B, site C, and then uh, roll it out one by one for you guys. A nice thing that here too, so if you guys hire somebody new, you have Glenn, Glenn, I need new phone within five, six days. I want their own direct number. Done. He emails me, I'll put the order through, he can do it himself too. We ship that directly here or to Glenn, it's a plug and play, put it in, depending on what kind of setup we go with. That's about it. The phone's ready to go.
So the phone instrument itself, those are additional costs, yes, no?
So in the number I gave you on the savings, it's already pre-built in.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I saw a picture somewhere.
So if you want, if you want. I can bring.
After the department that we had, I've been piling accounts of phones, what kind of phones? I have, I have provided then, and I will buy other, other vendors providing proposals with the accounts of right now.
Okay.
For. Jason, for your reference, we were looking at the Yaline T fifty-three's.
Okay, so it's fifty-four right here, let me bring it fifty-three.
The W fifty-six H portless.
Twenty-fifty-six or twenty-sixty? Okay. Are they, they look at the rugged or just a? Okay.
And some of.
Okay. Easy now.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's several different phones that you're looking at depending on the needs of the offices.
We're also looking at T forty-eight, which is more of an executive receptionist level phone, but none of the departments.
Okay.
So the T forty-eight, that's a big touchscreen too. So if you look, uh. Yeah.
Yeah.
So this would be the majority of the phones right here. That's up on the screen. Okay, nice thing about you enough too is when you look at a, kind of the aesthetics of it, they're not circle buttons, circles always smaller. To some people, you know, depending on, if you have big fingers, small fingers. I like to spread out buttons. It's easier, very loud speakerphone on this too. Functionality, the next one up is color screen. Um, but this phone here too is a hundred percent wifi. So if it's plugged in here and you need to take it home for any reason, you can actually plug the cat five cable out. Take it to your home, plug it in where you have access to light power, connect it to your wifi, and it works just as normal. Dial tone, voicemail, and extensions, you got, there's nothing to change except the physical picking up the phone, putting it in your car, taking it home. Yep. So these are yielding to some of the newest ones, and then they get bigger from here, but from a functionality. I don't recommend spending an extra hundred bucks a phone when you're only going to need one or two lines. There's nothing else you're really going to use it for.
So you said something interesting. So each phone would need a power source?
If you take it home, yeah.
In the office though.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, if they're on their, on their desk. Plug them, you could actually, they have a pass to, so.
Yeah.
Network cable coming out of the wall.
Okay. Okay, that's.
So there's nothing that you have to add to date, actually make this work. Yep. That, that accessibility is a hard here for you guys.
Okay.
So Jason, what happens if your phone falls on the floor or hurts?
So the nice thing with this too, that's already built in, is lifetime warranty on all this stuff. Okay, so. I don't know here, but let's say schools, okay, you have maybe kindergarten or something else and kids kind of get rowdy, get up, they hit the teacher's desk phone. Comes down, and let's say the screen just cracks and breaks, we can replace it next day for free. As long as we have it by, I think, two, like it's two PM. Yep. For lifetime of it.
It might take three days here though.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Use one of those Amazon droids to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here's a good one. This, this room. If we want to have a conference call in this room. We have a cord that comes from over in this corner, we stretch it across. And to use that, we have to disconnect the phone in the office over there. So. It's a bit archaic. So let me show. How do we fix that?
Yeah. So let me show you this one. I'm just going to plug in CP uh, sixty here and sixty. I actually, I actually have two models, but I'm just going to bring up the first one here. I don't know if that was the one that you told me about, was nine sixty or was it?
I, we were looking at the nine twenty, but.
I, I pretty much identical. The only thing that's different from this and the, and the twenty is the speaker functions here, okay? This is wireless speakers that you can connect and move them out. Okay, so.
I don't have to swing the cord across the room.
No, so underneath this, there's a base station. Uh, it looks kind of like a mini Starfish. It sits on, that's where the power comes in. Then this phone itself is a wifi connected. So I can now take that off, and I think it has an eight hour. Uh, eight hour talk time on it. So you can put that in the middle here, do whatever you want. You don't have to connect anything to it. When you're done, you set it over on a stocking station and it's done.
I think that's nine thirty.
Nine thirty? Okay, yeah. So. We wouldn't, we, you, you don't need this one, this is nine sixty.
No cords, just moving.
Yep.
That's, that's part of, that's part of why I think working to get Wi-Fi to this building.
Yeah.
Well, that was my next question. The wifi, it relies on our wifi?
Well, so all these.
Because right now we don't have great wifi.
Yes, so the nine thirty tech is a tech worthless dome, so it has its own worthless base that it works with.
Right.
The nine sixty to go over to wifi would rely on more.
But the phone system itself that you're talking about does not rely on our wifi.
You have the option. That's the nice thing about that. So like Justin, right? Yeah, Justin was saying, so if this is my. Do you have, I don't know if you guys have computers up here, but you see how you kind of have the internet cable coming up into. Up here, that's now going to be plugged into our phone. And we're going to give you another cord that goes from the phone back to the computer. So the internet passes through the phone, passes back to the computer. And that also powers on the phone as well. That's from the P O E switch, those are the power over ethernet switches that Justin manages in the back. Which you guys probably don't ever see, ever. Those are switches about this big and they have a whole bunch of little holes in them that they plug the internet cables in. So that provides all the power and internet through that to all the devices and the phones. Yep, so there's nothing you have to do in the backend. It's just. So deploying a computer, deploying the phone, we're going to give you another cord that goes back in the computer. And everything is on powered and there's no wifi, you don't have to worry about wifi. Now. We have another pandemic outbreak, let's say, okay, hopefully we don't ever have to worry about that. Let's say we do, or maybe somebody goes on vacation, maybe somebody's getting, has pregnant, and they have a baby, but they still want to be able to work from home. They can physically unplug their computer, their phone, take it, use a power cord, plug it in. And then living room and the bedroom, wherever they want to sit and connect it to their wifi at their house, and it'll work just like normal. There's no reprogramming the phone ever again. I could go from New York to California to Australia, anywhere I want. Still do a three, four digit dial, I can still make a long distance phone call on no charge. There's nothing that Justin never has to do again to reconfigure that to help you move from home or back office. Now, let's, let's talk about the internet real quick, because I know that's probably a good thing, you know, I've talked to Glenn here and Justin for a while. Um, until maybe some higher options come available, you might have outages sometimes, okay? So. In certain cases such as nine-one-one emergencies, such as schools, healthcare, libraries, um, I know you guys have the air. Airfield and stuff, but if it is a requirement to guarantee dial tone. I highly recommend to them four G. We're talking maybe an extra fifty bucks a month. But no matter what, no matter what happens to your internet, four G will pop that desk phone. And I'll always be able to have that call. So if I'm calling a school and I'm a parent, my kid gets hurt and all of a sudden I lose it. And I try to call back and I get a business signal, and I, I'm not going to be happy. If I'm trying to call nine-one-one for break in and it's, internet's down, somebody cut it out, somebody's digging it back out and doing some construction. And internet fails, I can't call them anymore. With four G, I can take it through just like a cell phone. So you're guaranteed, no matter whatever happens, you're up twenty-four seven.
This, actually, this is the conversation for us that I just had, so.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that, that is one of the requirements I've been saying, you know, for potential. Own providers is.
So with ours, we do a dual LAN, which means we're going to come in here with Verizon, T-Mobile, AT-T, we have two different carriers on our backup. So maybe Verizon's the best one day, maybe AT-T, T-Mobile's the best the next day. What, okay, it's going automatic. We use about a gig a month. That's, you guys don't pay for it. We, we do that on our own side. So it's pinging every five milliseconds to the towers. What's up, what's not, what's working? So in case that internet goes, it already knows which carrier to go through.
Yeah.
Yeah. The worst case scenario is you're on that phone without SD-WAN, the phone call will drop. But guess what? Re, just redial that phone number and you're back up. That's the worst case scenario. Better than being down for an hour, five hours, or a couple of days till somebody can fix that internet pipe.
So the big question.
Yep.
Dollars.
Yep.
Compared to what we have now.
From what I saw, that's the first time I ever saw that. I already did the numbers in the back room there, for probably about a thousand bucks cheaper a month. Yeah, without me going through the here. I mean, I could be eight hundred bucks, but that's looking at maybe Starbucks's in certain places, four G. But we're going to need to talk about that. What is a requirement per site?
Yeah.
Um, but again, fifty bucks extra that I'm missing per site, you have ten, that's an extra five hundred. I'm still five hundred bucks cheaper and you have four redundancy at every site, but I don't think you guys need that.
So better system. A little less money.
Less money. More functionality, better disaster recovery redundancy. And there's nothing out of pocket. Now, I can be more, I can be probably thousand or thirteen hundred bucks cheaper if you guys want to buy the COVID upfront. Or I can just zero it out and build it in monthly. You guys will own it after the term. And then after that first term, your monthly will even drop another two hundred, three hundred dollars a month.
So I'd like to see the dollars and cents.
Yeah, there's. You got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, so, um. If you guys do a five-year term, you get five free months upfront. If you guys do a three-year term, you get three months upfront. And then from our leasing side, you get ninety days deferment on all the hardware, guaranteed no matter what. So you have no payments for at least ninety to hundred and twenty, to hundred and fifty days. So there's no other crossings out the gate, but we do not extend. The contract. So if it's sixty months, we don't go to sixty-five, it's still a sixty month on a five year. We're still giving you that five free months. Price does not change. At the gate.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
So how long does it take to install all this?
So.
Glenn?
So here's how it goes. You got to figure out those.
Yes.
So once we have a phone, it's called an F O C date, that's the only thing we, we can't control, okay, we can spend an extra thousand bucks trying to speed it up. But they're like, no, they, they want that extra month, that's how the incumbent carrier is gonna work, so. You know, everybody wants that last penny on the dollar right there, so they're gonna hold it as long as they can, but they only have, I think it's thirty days max, they can do that. So we usually say two to three weeks on the port, um, we'll have a go date, go live date. Prior to that, we're gonna install the date before, we're gonna give every phone temporary numbers to test. To make calls, to train you guys, we're gonna do everything upfront before you go live, so you'll know how that system works before you go live. Now, if you wanna go live sooner, we can do that. Okay, we just won't have the numbers reported, but we can give you temporary numbers, we can mask the phone number, so if you call outbound, it still looks like it's your old number. But we're gonna mask it.
So all the old numbers will go away and.
The ones you don't need, I say throw it, cause that's costing me money today.
But we can keep our, our regular.
You want your direct lines and main numbers, and the office keep those, we'll port those over.
The rollover numbers is.
You don't need those, that just.
And if you wanna, what's called a D I B, a direct inward dial number, they're only like ninety-nine cents a month.
So it's like Larry Carroll, shit, is it Lacy or shit? Okay, I see both, Lacy? Okay, so if you all wanted your own direct dial. Instead of having, you know, extension only, so somebody can call you direct, a family member, something's going on, they, they can bypass everything. You don't have to publicize this, your outbound caller ID could still be the main office number, but if you have a family member or school or whatever it is.
Like the DA.
Yeah, so he could have his own direct number, but if he doesn't wanna outcast it, you know, even from his cellphone. He can call out, still show his main number to the whole office, or his direct line, never this, and text. Through that, without ever showing, giving your cellphone number.
Yeah, I can remember, there's problems with that, where you use another extension, cause you didn't want the person calling your back on your direct one.
So I have fifty-six partners I manage from the Mississippi West, and they all have. Ten to four hundred clients, right, and they all have my direct line at work, which they call, it's gonna ring here, they text it, it's gonna go here and here. Okay, but they, none of them, actually, you do, but the end user is nobody has my personal cellphone. And I can shut that on and off whenever I want to. So you're in court, you don't want your phone to go off from your number texting, you can go in there and you can turn that off, so it's only gonna ring your office phone number. You walk out of that case, you can turn it right back on, you get messages, boom, it's going live. So you have full control of anything that you want at any given time.
So internally, when you're, let's say, I'm, I've got a company phone.
Yep.
And I wanna call another department.
Yep.
Is it the whole number, or is it an extension?
It's just three, you guys are gonna choose your extension, you might already have them, keep it the same. Or maybe you wanna say, fire one over here is gonna be one hundred, fire two is gonna be two hundred, three, you have schools, four hundred.
Okay, so then the other buildings, I mean, even like way out to our buildings and grounds, they'll all be extensions and connected, okay.
Everybody's under one umbrella.
Which would be a nice customer service to do. Yeah, that's why I was asking, okay.
Two, you know, phone system for the. Or to stay on your call.
So, are, is everybody looking at doing it that way instead of a direct? I like when real people answer.
It's, it's, it's to solve a problem that every department's having, where, you know, the, the public list numbers like. If you Google Persian County. You get, I think, leases.
Yeah.
Or, or parents. The, 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 the numbers that people, the ways.
Well, there's no, there's no telephone directory, like there used to be, people, yeah.
With a very simple message. We can redirect people.
No, I, I, I understand that, cause I Google phone numbers.
I wanna show you, you guys brought up a kind of a, a concept that I wanna talk about, your directories, okay, kinda scene, extensions, everything else. So. This is our receptionist console right here, okay? Down the line, team hub, this'll change, but for right now, this is what it looks like, now this, everybody gets it, so everybody has access to this, okay, it's already built in that license. And the nice thing about this is. You can see every department, every group, if they're on the phone, off the phone. And it's a drag, it's a kind of a drag, if you answer that phone call off, one of your extensions. You can, there's a tapping name in to transfer, you can see if they're live, you can message them, say, hey, I got Lacy on the phone, I got Larry on the phone, can you take this phone call? And they can type back in, hey, no, I'm actually on the phone, I need twenty more minutes, send them straight to voicemail. You have the option to drag it straight into voicemail hard, which means it's just hard transfer, they go straight to voicemail or software, you can introduce them. So this right here, you're extending your directory now, anytime you add or remove somebody. Their extensions are on here, you can search by name, number, whatever you want, you can see their live presence. I can also see that from my physical cellphone too. So, I don't know if that helps in any way, but if somebody calls in the main number, and they wanna be able to transfer that way. They can just drag and drop it, or use their phone and say they could look visually to see if that person's available or not, if they are. Like transfer one, one, two, one, whatever it is, or drag it on here, and drop it, and boom, sends a phone call automatically.
Wow.
So, these are things that we'll train you guys on, and it's up to you if you wanna use it, you don't have.
Yeah, we have an archaic phone system, so yes, we'll need training.
And it's, it's color coded. And the green is idle, the red bucks on a call, and if it was yellow, it's a ring.
Yep.
So do you have the person's picture in there too?
Not, not in here.
Thank goodness.
Your Microsoft Teams there, right?
So we have Teams.
Okay.
We would, I would like to. Be able to integrate Teams for presence and. And communications, especially, especially.
So I will let. Brian take over now, so here is. We integrate fully.
We do direct routing with Teams, um, and it's really an extension on our, our platform. It's a single extension, um, whether you're using the desktop app or the mobile app, it's the same extension. You can also use the voicemail inside of Teams. If you want transcription service, we don't natively have transcription, but. Microsoft natively does.
Um, now, our, our subscription.
Yep, so there's. I'm not sure what your, what your Teams licensing use today. Is it, uh? G one and G three, okay, so G one and G three, you'll need the phone system license that gives us direct routing link. And then if you want the audio conference bridge for the individual users, usually I don't see that go out to everybody, but. There's people that do a lot of calls, and they need that dialing capability, they cannot piggyback on Microsoft's bridge. So they do force you to have that, uh, audio conference bridge license, it's four dollars. Yeah, so you, you need one of those for each of you that needs that dialing number. For the bridge.
We go through quantities.
Other maps, if you're on E one or E three, phone system license gives you the direct.
So. Thank you. So real quick, everybody gotta pack it here, um, everything we've gone over that I kinda went over, second page of the feature, so if everybody kinda wants to. You know, take us home or look at it, just. Get familiar, if you have questions later, email myself, email Glenn, Justin, pop, pop it out, we'll get back to you soon as possible. Um, picture the phones, the Microsoft Team bundles are built into this too. The T forty-eights. The fifty threes that we talked about, I showed you up on the screen, that's a built in, you have a lot of the features, functionality that. More team stuff, or, or Q O S in the back, or employee alerts. But besides that, I mean, it's.
One, one more thing on the team, you still get our softphone, desktop softphone as well as the mobile client. So I, I treat that more, another redundancy level, that Microsoft has issues. You still have access to your phone.
So what we need from you guys and there's costs and prices.
So we'll look through.
And, and, and Paris.
You got it, yep, I'll build that for you guys. If everything's ready, the spreadsheets, you know, users per site, uh, my next question is gonna be, do you want a Starbucks, you want four G sites? I recommend schools, firehouse, any emergency.
And I would think so, yes, it wasn't that much more.
I will build this so every single site, except I think the airport, the field, that's one tone.
There's not too many people at the cemetery that make calls.
So have you included all the community centers like Grass Valley and Emily and? And? And the fire departments?
So, um.
Well, and I'm thinking the fire departments too, and the reason for that is, it would cut down a lot on our phone bills. I don't think they have a choice.
Well, is anybody actually mending the fire department?
No, but it's, it, it would deal away with the individual phone cost, is what I'm thinking.
So. Here is. This, this is, this is, uh, my spreadsheet, uh, phone counts of aid that. Have been reported to me by departments, so the orange table is, um, by bill. I think the sheriff can, has, the substations are actually. So I do, I do have phones for those substations, if I need to add one, then I can do that. So yeah, so the, the T fifty-three column, I said, basically, driver. That was the black and white screen.
Yep.
T forty-eight was the, the color touchscreen. W fifty-six was the wireless phones, and CP nine twenty was. If I. Shift over to the left here. This is breakdown by.
Can I ask a question just a little bit? Can you add a column next to CP nine twenty, the conference phone, so column N right there? And put four G. And then. What buildings would be mandatory to have a backup feature built in? If it's not required, you don't think it's gonna be beneficial, then leave it separate. Is that, we're talking about maybe fifty to sixty bucks per month on each one of those?
I would, I will have to give that to departments.
Yep.
I would say. At minimum, these six sites.
Okay, so now under O, put S B for Starbucks. We just type out Starbucks real quick. And then where it says one, put one on each one of those six. And then, that's a two, three, three. Right, that's. Yeah, I don't think we need Starbucks. Uh, the library. Has fiber.
You know what, there is one more. It's the community center, because that is also the.
If I can get a copy of that, I can print this. Is it, okay, is it maybe just on a different link that I saw, okay?
This is, this is the void estimate.
Oh, that's right, right here, okay. Yeah.
So.
I'm gonna change this. Can you change the nine twenty, make it say nine thirty as well? I'm gonna change that phone. So they'll have a multiple docking station on them. Or a cost is almost identical, so. Nine thirty, yep. So it's not updating online, I don't know if it's alive, if you guys see the first. And from a billing perspective, is this billed by site, or is it still in the one main, like, everything on one bill, how do you guys?
Yeah.
That's easy, okay. Anything else? Does, do any of these buildings have multiple connections coming in, like a coax and a fiber coax, D S L, or internet access? So you have, you, you have four different IP addresses to different outfits of the building here?
Sorry.
You have four different IP addresses to, you have four different facilities in the building? Or you have one primary ISP coming in, and then it's.
So you're, you're making, you're making a change.
Okay.
It's not gonna kick out until after July first.
Okay.
But we are, um. We're putting, for, 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 for the four buildings here in town.
Yep.
We are. Uh, putting in the pure, pure LAN. So from the courthouse cabin, they're going. So this is what we're gonna do. So they're gonna be wireless leaps from the spoke to the hub. And then a wireless leap from the hub to the ISP, and they have fiber going out to.
So.
That's a good, that's a good. That's what.
Because I think they just have.
So, that 4G, the Starbucks right there, I don't have to use those, if this is. If we, if we get this, if we get this bid, what would be your installation power? Because what I have here is going to change if you guys have this installed in July. I can knock off a lot of money right there.
So.
You can knock off a bunch of money by what?
So, according to this, if this goes through, okay, and. You have this installed before a phone system is installed, I can cut Starbucks out of that, and a Starbucks is going to cost like an extra thirty, thirty bucks a month per site. So, here's our year to save maybe a hundred bucks a month.
We accepted that today, starting.
Okay.
July 1st, right? Starting July 1st.
Just real quick on your drawing. This, I mean, the both, both of them would give starts on July 1st. Are you going to be expanding? We're. So, it's going to be one.
So, Jason and Brian, do you need us and for anything else at this point?
No, I think we're good.
For lunch, because we have another meeting.
So, we will. We're putting in recess, and we have a one o'clock meeting right back here, and then we'll do this after.
Guys, ladies, it was a pleasure, thank you guys.
Yeah.
I've never been, I've never been in trouble, so it's kind of, it's kind of weird at the beginning, but it's kind of cool.
The board and commission, the board of commissioners meeting is now in recess until after the board of health meeting at one o'clock. Zoom broadcasts will temporarily end now to resume for the one o'clock board meeting, board of health meeting. To be followed then by the remainder of the board of commissioners meeting. Again, the Zoom broadcasts will end until the one o'clock board of health meeting, at which point it will resume. Then after the board of health meeting will be the remainder of the board of commissioners meeting. Thank you.
A, a meeting for June 8th, a special meeting. I, we have two meetings at the same time.
At eight o'clock, you mean?
No, we have, well, I guess it wasn't that one. But at four o'clock, there's the GID meeting and the museum meeting.
Yeah.
But they both. Who has a reserve written? I call the GID. Oh, you know what, I remembered that too, four o'clock at the city, not here.
Okay.
Yeah.
What you want to go to the A is the first reading. The first reading of the minutes of the West, the assessment, and then your list of projects.
So that we can talk.
A top. Report from administrative assistant.
Last of the BDRs.
Oh, hopefully, they're done.
And then I am working with full pack. With regard to the survey that needed to be done. Emily. Full pack. Is it Emily?
Oh, 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 are you talking about that remote thing? Is that for full pack? That's. That's.
Back in April, I had submitted a survey that they wanted us to do. And they said that they didn't receive it, they were still looking for it, he never called me back, so I guess they go back.
Oh.
Okay.
It's for the.
It's for the remote control of.
For that fire. Okay, whatever that thing is.
Top of the water tent.
Wish list?
Evaluation forms to you.
And then personnel rules and regs, you get not start over, but with the new legislation.
I need to get that sent out to the.
Okay.
The only change was the recording with the.
Okay. Items for future agendas.
Do we want to discuss on the next agenda, El Com sent us information on that resolution? I mean, I don't know where, but whether we want to discuss or not, that's the only thing.
That'd be good, and then we need to put the star to star back on there for that one.
Um, the people that just start, sorry.
For the telephone.
Yeah.
It's, it's like, it's like, it's under the 50,000 limit, so we don't have to go big. But, I assume.
We have to approve it though.
Yeah, you still have to, still have to. It's going to be well over a thousand, but it's going to be under.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we're not ready for the, by the time the next meeting comes.
I'm hoping I'll have all three, well, I've got, I've got one for it. That just in between, because I now have five others. Start a star, so I have, start a star is going to be getting their proposal within a couple of days. I just need to reach back out to launch, who's going to be my third. To, to get their proposal. And then. That'll, that'll, that'll be three. Prepare a package, like I think with internet. And I hope, I, I hope to have that for you by the next week, if not, or the first week of July.
So, you can work with Karen.
And then I have one other thing. I was wondering if we shouldn't, and Reid's going to hate me for this, but if we shouldn't go ahead and advertise our maintenance position as a permanent position. And I'm not referring to terminating or doing anything with the individual who's not at work right now. But we, our maintenance department is struggling, and they're especially in the summertime, they have all this work to do. And I'm thinking we should just bite the bullet and go ahead and advertise whoever's hired, they're on probation for one year anyway. And, and we don't know how things are going to work out if. But that's what I'm thinking, that we need to just go ahead and approve hiring a maintenance person full-time with benefits and just go forward. Currently, in the budget. The individual that's not at work is collecting so much in workman's comp and then another portion from sick leave. But, and I know that extra isn't in there, but I'm thinking we just need to do it so that we're not.
So, we should put it back on the agenda for discussion.
Anyway, I think it's important that we go forward, because we don't know in the long run what's going to happen. And I know we can't talk about any of the personal stuff.
But we can get it on. Board member input. Reports of meaning.
Kurt Inglewood, who is the assistant to Senator Cortez Masto, is going to be here in Love Lock on Monday, and I'm going to meet him for lunch at Sea Punch. He wanted to talk about broadband and he wanted to talk about the third order, but I told him that's been taken care of. And I asked Heidi, but she's not available, but I'll meet with him and if there's anything that you want brought up, you know.
Broadband.
Yeah, I know, broadband is always top of the list, and what funding we can use, you know, for that. I'm sorry. If, if you'd like to come, that would be great. It's Monday at Sea Punch at 12 o'clock noon, and it's Kurt Inglewood.
I'd like you to bring up our water line to the airport.
Okay.
Will grant her out there.
That's all infrastructure, right?
Pardon me?
Yeah, this could be on top of what the county has received.
We're working on a couple of angles, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but if we can get money from any source.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, is grant money to do it.
So, the airport, it just needs a larger water line, right?
It's to replace the water line that's there.
Right now, it's just a water line to an individual home, is an interesting thing, or is it a well?
It's a two-inch water line that serves the house and two hangers.
And then you need.
And no fire suppression.
No fire suppression, and so it needs to like.
It's a biggie for.
Yeah.
I think it's a liability without it.
Well, yeah. Emily.
In the water system.
Well, he'll probably say that there's money in the. Recovery grant, but anyway, that.
But the thing is, is there's, yeah, there's money in the recovery grant, but.
There's not enough.
Not enough.
Anything else? And. Let's see, safety meetings are going to start up in July. Oh, August, sorry, August. And the hospital board met, they approved their budget, things are going fairly well there. Cemetery board met, nothing more up to date than what Cheryl's reported. Cemeteries did look really good for the smoke can.
And they're being locked, right?
Yes, effective the first, which was yesterday. And then. About it, Healthcare Foundation, we're having our annual fundraiser dinner, the Bass Dinner on Saturday, August 14th, so we're going to go forward.
August 14th?
August 14th, yeah.
Bass Dinner.
And I'm going to have tickets to sell. We already did, okay, yeah, we already did, but I'll double check.
I gave the book, I gave the calendar back.
You washed your hands of it, right? Not quite.
Not quite.
Anyway, that's all.
I attended the Humboldt River Water Meeting for last, and. They may come to counties for money propensity. They have, they could, they have a match, but we, counties have, have to bring $60,000 to see clouds and.
So, what are you looking at individually?
They, they're going to look into it and see if the last time maybe that was effective. They're still protesting everything. Water doesn't look great. Swords are so dry. Are you. Person started yesterday and, and Heidi spent four hours with her and.
Are you going to overwhelm them? She is a little bit. Are you going to be checking up on her just to make sure she's, you know, doesn't go out screaming or something?
Yeah, and Heidi's, Heidi's been great.
Yeah.
And John's actually been really helpful too. And they had the dinner last night for the high school and.
Good.
They thanked the county commissioners last night for donation of the space for that event, which was very, I don't know how many people were there, but there. So, 200.
They said a hundred, maybe.
So, what was it? It was the high school.
Award, scholarship.
Okay.
Banquet.
Because they were going to separate it from.
Yes.
And they did, yeah.
Yeah, and that's good.
It went very well.
And, I think that's all I have.
I had a, a very good trip from the TV board to Salt Lake for a two-day, there conference. Drive one day, drive next, yeah. Anyway, very good conference, I always learn something. I guess that's about all I have. I skipped over correspondence, did we not have any correspondence? Oh, yeah, okay. Doesn't bother?
Vouchers.
Vouchers, vouchers. We have those, we must have.
I'm ready.
There is a VSL this time.
I don't know if Bryce is going to be. The vouchers with I21 to VSL.
All second.
The motion second, all those in favor? I, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the voucher 521 to VSL.
All of the same.
And I'll second that.
Thank you.
We have motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion. Saying nothing further. Oh, public comm, public. No action may be taken on a matter raised, I had already checked it off. Oh, action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda. Until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item of one rejection will be taken. Public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. There's no public here, anybody on, nobody there?
Okay.
Okay, now we are adjourned.
But this is where it's all being ended. Everyone's dropped off.
They didn't stick around.